At a regular meeting, City Council, City Pearland. February the 24th year 2020, which is still hard to believe. If you please rise, we'll have an invocation light by Councilmember Little. And Councilmember Moore will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Bow your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on everyone here tonight and those that couldn't make it. We ask that you give us compassion and wisdom in our decision making. Please protect and bless our first responders and our men and women in the service serving here and abroad. And we ask everyone safe arrival at home tonight. We ask these things in your name.
Please join me in the pledge.
Allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know what they like?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I want to appreciate all of you being here tonight as we go through the process of our business of our city. And incidentally, I follow the same, will be following and using the same agenda that you probably have in your head too. So if you need to keep track of where I am, you can look at your agenda and see where we are. Moving to item number three on the agenda is roll call. And all of our city councilmen are here in person with bright and shiny faces. And moving into next item four, which is citizen comments, I'll ask our mayor pro tem, Councilmember Little to...
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call you up when we get to the specific item you want to speak on, but we've got a couple of citizens that wish to make general comments or something that's not on the agenda. Frederick Cooper, please come to the podium. Give your name and address. Let me hear. Talk to three minutes, please. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds.
You have the benefit of the podium.
Thank you, Judge Reed, I'm sorry, Mayor Reed and City Councilmembers. Thank you for your time and your attention today. I'll try to be brief. I'm gonna set this up as Clint Eastwood, good, bad and ugly. I was on 288 driving southbound on December the 19th, 2019. Traffic was busy, it was congested. There was a car behind me honking, swerving. I looked back and there was a young man and he had a firearm in his hand. He placed it on the steering wheel. I looked back. This man had a pistol on his steering wheel pointing at my car. I called 911, gave him the description of the car. He saw me on the phone. He moved around. I was scared he was gonna shoot. I had my son with me. We had spent father-son day together. This man passed by, kept going southbound on 288 on the feeder road. I gave a good description to the car. My son got the license plate number. Pearland Police Department did a fantastic job. They caught this guy in like three blocks, pulled him over on Broadway, right there at Walmart. And I called them in. I was gonna come to the police station to fill out a report. They said, hey, go to the scene. They want you to fill out a statement there. They want you to identify the suspect. We went over there. Officers were excellent. The 911 operators were excellent. Everything went really well. We filled out the paperwork. It was a really pleasant experience. So that's the, that's the good, right? That's the good part. The bad is, the follow-up on that, I told them, hey, call me if you need anything. If you need me to come down, you need a witness, how do we process this? I'm not an attorney. I'm not in the criminal justice arena. I don't know anything about that. So I never received any information back. I had to call, hey, what's going on with this? Oh, I don't know. You need to check with this officer. Send her emails. She'll send you an email. So then Officer Elanger, I believe her name is Elanger, and our supervisor was Vasek, sent them emails, trying to figure out what's going on with this. After several calls, I find out from Zoria County that the person was charged with unlawful carrying of a firearm. I'm like, what, what is that? He pointed a firearm at me and my son in traffic. See, this is the ugly part. What, what's going on? Why is there no pursuit of this violent threatening behavior? Why haven't we processed this in a proper manner? I just want you to know what's going on in the city. I don't know if this is a oops, a mistake, something that rarely happens, or is this the way we manage the ball? I sent Pearland Police Department several emails saying, hey, what's going on? That guy pointed a firearm at us? Well, it didn't meet the criteria. The DA wouldn't allow us to do this. DA department says, hey, we can't do anything that they didn't charge him with. And it's just this back and forth. Oh, we'll send you a complaint form. You wanna fill out a complaint? This is silly. I just don't understand with all the gun violence we have in this country, that we can't be consistent on our approach when we see people that demonstrate violent behavior. This person, I looked him up, this person is ex-military. I love our military. Some of them are great. Some of them are struggling and need, you know, a review, a look to make sure they're okay. They're dealing with something, maybe they need some assistance. Maybe they don't need a firearm.
I'm sir.
Maybe they, times up. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Next person is Diane Butcher. Please come to the podium. State your name and address. Let me hear your talk to three minutes, please. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds.
So my name is Diane Butcher. I'm at 1922 Prairie Creek. Couple of issues. First, the water bill. It's beyond comprehension to me that somebody didn't realize that this new system would create a gap in the first place. And at first, I was really confused about that, how this could have gone on for two years. But then I took a look at the city's credit card statements and now I get it. All that whining and dining and traveling really keeps a person busy. And you can only do so much, right? You only have so much time. So the first month, you're behind a few days. The second month, you're behind a few more days. Surely by the third month, somebody could have and should have said, hey, guys, I don't think this is working. I do our personal finances. I'm the administrative secretary for our church and manage those finances. And I'm the secretary treasurer for Wood Creek neighborhood, and I handle those finances. And no, I don't work with millions of dollars, but it's not rocket science. It's simple math. You're either in the black or you're in the red. I'm pretty sure a fifth grader could have figured out, figured this out a whole lot sooner. So I can only assume that the somebodies in charge aren't smarter than a fifth grader. My suggestion, get rid of the somebodies who couldn't figure this out until we were $6 million in the red and hire some fifth graders who know how to do math. My second issue is the water purity. People have been complaining for a long time about the smell, the discoloration, the black gunk that accumulates in the sinks and tubs. So not only are we paying higher than average water rates, but we're being double billed due to an error by the water department and the poor quality of our water is alarming. My third issue is the animal shelter. I spoke before on this and the reply that I received was that the voters voted on it and there was nothing they could do about it. But that begs the question, who put it on the ballot in the first place? That's a ridiculous amount of money to spend on a puppy palace when our roads and schools are in disrepair. I have two proposals from the website for the animal shelter. One from 2019 for $4 million. And then 2020, it bumps up to 13 million, adding 14,000 square feet. With only room for 11 more dogs, 14 more cats and six more quarantine areas. That's 31 more cages for an additional $290,000 each. So I have to save and budget and find bargains. And I'm very frugal with all my financial responsibilities. Every bit as much with the church and the Wood Creek finances as I am with my own. I prioritize needs over wants, necessities over luxuries.
Time.
And I'm being fed up with the city wasting, being irresponsible, responsible and incompetent with my money.
Mayor, the rest of the citizens want to speak on specific agenda items. I'll call them up when we get to those.
Please, citizens will be heard. Moving to item five on the agenda, public hearings. We have none tonight. Move to item number six, consent agenda. And I'll ask Councilmember Orlando if he'll do it with exception of item B.
Consideration and possible action of the consent agenda, items A through E with the exception of B, so moved.
Second.
Motion of second. We have a motion of second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, with that information on the record, Councilmember, would you present item B for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2020-30, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion of a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Good evening. This is a renewal of an existing contract, one of the three that we have available. This is for a rough cut for some of our public properties and rights away. It is a net increase of about eight acres. But it does follow the same piece rates that the contractor had bid and that competitive proposal just adjusted for that. About 200,000 for programmed work to get to the 231. And the actual last year was, I think as we noted, about $191,000. So between the additional properties and a full year, that's where we get to the estimated amount for the 231, but it'll be whatever the actual amounts are based upon this, the rates. So that's all we have, sir.
Councilor, have any question or comment regarding the...
I do. Just one question up front. How many contracts do we have right now, once we approve this one for lawn care, maintenance type contracts?
We'll have to get back to you. There's this one for the rough cut. There's another one for, you know, there's something for ball fields, as I recall. And there's another one for, you know, more of the regular rights aways. So if we can formalize that.
Okay, yeah, so we're getting pretty expensive on that so far. But how many people do we have, our staff do we have that oversees these contracts? I remember one of the last times when we did the, I guess, some of that was doing the parks and stuff like that. We made some changes there and went outside with people to do it. And then I think we had three people during that time doing the work. I believe Trent, you said that those would be absorbed in the contract to oversee that work. So I guess what I'm asking is how many do we have in staff right now that are overseeing the three, I guess it's three contracts that we have for mowing?
Before we get back over that, I mean, that was off the top of my head. There may be others, but like I said, we can get back to you. You know, that comes out of the Public Works Rights Away Group and it depends on the contract. So what you're recalling, when we made that change, that there were some people that were able to absorb and instead of adding positions, we just held the line and kept those folks to do different things. But we can brush that up and tell you, Trent has more in terms of like the oversight of the different contracts we have. It's not, we have, Eric Hammond is one person that comes to mind, but then there's others who would have pieces of it, so.
So Mr. Pearson, I'll start off by saying we have two regular mowing contracts. And one of those mowing contracts includes facilities, grounds, et cetera. And the other one includes all of our rights aways. In addition to that, there is another contract that we have for all the mowings that are separated out underneath the EDC, and that's a separate agreement. And Trent, I don't know if you want to go from there?
And then, of course, there's this contract, which is the rough cut mowing contract. And in the rights away division of Public Works, we've got two employees that oversee that, do the contract administration as well as the inspection to make sure that the work's done in accordance with the contract.
Okay, but I remember when we did the other one and that. And I think it was the Parks Department that we were doing the cuts on independents and those. And there was three people that was involved in it then, and I asked the same question. And they said, or said that there was gonna just be absorbed in there to manage those contracts.
So back when that initially occurred, what transpired was parks still maintain the park facilities, but what was taken away from that was the medians and esplanades and the rough cuts throughout the community, the ditches, et cetera. And then that was transferred over to Public Works. A couple of the staff members, I believe it was a total of three, went over to Public Works at that time and the rest of them stayed to maintain the parks themselves.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and that's what it amounts to. I was just wondering on the number of people, because it's the whole point of this in the beginning, when we started doing it several years ago, it's being pushed to go to the outside, you know, because we had so many people that were doing the mowing and what have you. And it was looked at at that time, it'd be a lot easier to get it out and then put your mowing, on your mowing cycles, I guess right now, about 12 a year, once a month on a mowing cycle. So it was not a whole lot to manage on that once they go out. So that's what I was just, I just wonder if you could sometime follow up and let me know the number of people that we actually have working in that area right now. And I guess it's all coming out right away out of Public Works.
We can follow up with that group. That group does a lot more than just manage these mowing contracts, but we do have two people that their main responsibility is managing this and the other mowing contracts within the right of ways.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Is this not something that could be added to the, one of the existing mowing contracts we have and get a better price for this? Or, I mean, why are we doing a whole nother contract for another mowing?
So we had several contracts and we've basically combined those into two contracts. One, the bulk of it is the medians as well as our facilities. Those are more of a finish cut and are done on a much more frequent basis. And so that's one contract. And then a different type of mowing, the rough cut mowing that's done about 12 times per year is in this contract. So this is our ditch mowing as well as the properties that we own that we do the rough cut mowing on 12 times a year. So typically different equipment used. And so those, that's where we drew the line on separating out the two different contracts to attract the different type of companies that do that type of mowing.
I complete your report. No comments? Any other comments from Council for the staff report? There are none, I believe, Madam Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, matters removed from the consent agenda. We just handled that one, this is item B, and completed it. Moving to item number eight, we have new business, item number eight, and I'll ask Councilmember, our city manager, to pick up on this item.
Thank you, Smear. This is a follow-up to the discussion we had just last week and been doing work since then to further review the problem and best solutions going forward. And again, apologize that we're here talking about this, but I think based upon the consensus we got last time, we have a plan to go forward and we want to formalize that tonight by consensus and, you know, touch on some other topics along the same lines. So Mr. Branson's got the lead for this and a presentation for you. We'll be posting this up later tonight or in the morning, so it'll be available too. But we've been working up until this point to pull this together.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, citizens of Pearland, friends and staff members. I'd like to briefly go over an outline of tonight's presentation. We're going to begin by just doing a very brief overview of the last Monday night special council meeting where we introduced this particular subject. We're gonna talk about the overview of our standard reading and billing process. We'll recap the issue at hand that we have. We're gonna clarify some misconceptions. No money has been lost. Customers are not being overcharged. Customers are not being charged additional fees. We're gonna talk about those a little bit more later. In regards to option B, we're gonna talk specifically about the plan that you all by consensus agreed to last week. We're gonna talk about the different, we're gonna talk about some questions that you brought up regarding option B. And then we're gonna talk about the communication plan and then policy considerations moving forward. So last week, we explained the billing delay issue. Then we discussed three options to resolve the problem. Those were options A, options B, and option C. Option A was a plan where we would actually send out bills every 25 days in order to catch up the delay from the actual time that the bills are read to when we actually send out the bills. So we were gonna move up from our standard monthly billing schedule to a 25-day time period. Problem with that was there was an immediate impact on our residents and that they would, in many cases, have to pay two bills per month. The second option that we talked about was option B, which was the 3230 plan. And we'll go over a little more detail in that, regarding that particular plan. Then option C was a plan whereby we would send out a bill to everyone for all of the amount that has not been billed to date. The consensus was to proceed with the 3230 plan. And then you provided, as I mentioned earlier, direction to, you provided, you asked us a couple of questions. You said, bring that information back to us tonight and then talk to us about how we will implement the plan. So a brief overview, I'd like to just remind Council that the city is divided up into four different cycles. Those cycles are titled 11, 12, 13 and 14. And they're divided up based on quadrants throughout the city. We bill, excuse me, we read the meters in those cycles and then we bill in those cycles as well. Cycle 11 is from the Friendswood City Limits over to Highway 35. Cycle 12 is from Highway 35 to Manville Max Road. Cycle 13 is from Manville Max Road to 288. And everything west of 288 is cycle 14. Historically, we would read the meters on a monthly basis. And we would start with cycle 11, the first week of the month. Then we would read cycle 12, the second week of the month. Cycle 13, the third week of the month. And then cycle 14, the fourth week of the month. Basically, what we would do is we would follow up the next week or approximately 10 to 15 days, depending on holidays and other circumstances. And we would bill almost immediately thereafter. And then what we would do, as I mentioned, is we would bill roughly a week after, anywhere from 10 to 15 days after the actual meters were read. This is kind of a process of how we went about, how we go about reading the meters and then creating the bill. Our meter services division in Public Works, what they do is they have vehicles and those vehicles are equipped with equipment. And they drive through the community based on those cycles. And as they drive by, it actually picks up the reads from the meters that are in the ground. That information is then taken in the vehicle, it's taken back to Public Works, a file is downloaded, it's sent over to utility billing. Historically, we would, we would do those reads on a 28 to 32-day cycle. That's an industry standard. Then, as I said, that information was downloaded into the system. It was then sent over to utility billing. Utility billing would then read that information. And if they saw any exceptions, any no reads, then what they would do is they would create a work order, send that back over to Public Works. And Public Works would then go out and read the meters that didn't register the first time that they came through. Again, we would start that day, that process historically between 28 to 32 days. Meter readers would then go out and they would do the rereads and that could take a day or a day and a half, depending on weather and other issues that they encountered in the field. Next, once all of those reads were done, the information was then inputted into our New World system. Bills were generated and created, sent out to our customers and then accounts. Then we'd process the payments once they came in. So we ended up in the summer of July of 2018. There was a conscious effort to change the schedule. That, the reason why we changed the schedule was because we got out of sync from the 28 to 32 days. And sometimes the cycle, the read cycle went a little bit longer than that. And we started to receive citizen complaints. The longer the read cycle, potentially the higher the bill, which could go into the next tier. So we made a conscious decision to change the read cycle to start and, on average, completed in roughly a 28-day cycle. So what we did is we moved up the read cycle on every 28 days. And then the billing cycle stayed where it was on a monthly basis. So again, we sped up the read cycle every 28 days and the billing cycle... So again, we sped up the read cycle every 28 days, and the billing cycle stayed where it was. And over time, we got to the gap that where we are today. And I just want to show you this chart here, and this is for illustration purposes only. When we were reading 28 to 32 days and billing 10 to 15 days afterwards, you can see that we stayed within that time period of 10 to 15 days on average after the actual reads took place, excuse me, when the bills went out. When we changed to the 28-day read cycle and we stayed on that monthly billing cycle, it's important to note, we didn't miss any bills because we kept billing on a monthly basis. Everybody kept receiving bills, but what transpired was the billing cycle, excuse me, the read cycle was outpacing the billing cycle. So you can see the end result of that over here. It just simply ended up to where we are now, where we're roughly 60 days or two months out of whack. I'd like you to look at this particular chart, and I think it's important to note that last year, less than a year ago, we were less than 30 days out in May, excuse me, we were 38 days from the time that we actually read the meters to the time that we bill. We were 30 days behind. In March of 19, excuse me, in cycle 12, in March, in that particular cycle, we were less than 30 days behind the time that we actually read the meters. Cycle 13, in March, we were less than 30 days from the time that we read the meters till we billed. And likewise, in cycle 14, less than a year ago, we were at 30 days behind the actual time when the meters were read and then the actual bills were sent out. Unfortunately, at that time, we should have said, hey, there's a problem here. Okay? And that did not occur, and that was a mistake on our part. So it's important to note, as the months progressed, that gap gets larger and larger as you move ahead, and this is an important, these, what's, what's shown up here is on the left-hand side, you have the read dates, and on the right-hand side, you have the corresponding bill dates. And what you can see by this chart, in each of the individual sections, you can see that the dates get higher as you go down month by month. You can also see over here on the read dates, that the read dates themselves are, are going down from the previous month. And so you have that combined, 28-day moving forward, the bills staying on a monthly basis, and that's how we ended up getting behind. I want to talk about a few myths right now, and that millions of dollars are lost or missing, and that's not the case. All the money that comes in, we can account for. What has happened is, is that there's a gap between the read cycle and billing cycle. That's it, plain and simple. That's the issue. Second myth is that customers are being overcharged. Customers are being charged based on the consumption, the information that comes through the meters is downloaded in the system. It's based on the actual consumption that is being used. Another misconception is that customers are being charged additional fees. That is not the case. That hasn't happened. That hasn't happened. Cycle 11 is the only cycle where a resident received two bills due dates in the same month. That is the only cycle. Now, there might be a concern, okay, I'm set up on auto pay. Well, auto pay comes out on the due dates, and only on the due dates. Our bank draft, it comes out on the due dates. We've moved back the 24th date to March 3rd. So if you have a bank draft, nobody's going to get billed like it initially stated on that bill. Nobody's going to get billed two times in February, excuse me, nobody's going to get their credit card deducted two times in February. So again, there's no additional fees related to this issue of a delay in billing. There's another misconception, and that is that this relates to the new meter installation, the AMI project, and that's not the case. The AMI project is going extremely well. There's, last week I reported that we had over 28,000 meters installed. We now have over 29,000 meters installed. We're steadily making progress on that, and those meters are reading accurately. In some cases, those individuals that have a new meter installed in the ground, they have not actually been billed for the consumption that has gone through that new meter. Again, we're behind from the time that the meters are read till the time that the bill So, when we were talking about planned considerations that we presented to you last week, there were three major considerations for the plans themselves, and those considerations were minimize impact on the citizens, the complexity of the execution of that plan. Was it going to be difficult to execute for the residents? And was it going to be difficult to execute based on the system that we have, our New World system, to send out bills, process bills, do the reads, everything? And then the third thing, which was, from my perspective, less important, important, but very important, the length of time to close the gap between the meter read and the actual bills. Those were considerations when we were looking at those three options that I talked about last week, or excuse me, that I talked about earlier, that we discussed last week. Now, long-term, when this matter's resolved with assistance from the AMI process and just standard billing practices, what we're going to be doing and what our long-term goal is, is to meter read on a monthly basis on or about a regular date. Right now, we have to drive by in a vehicle, and we have to take the readings from all the meters that are in the ground. With the new AMI project, when it's 100% functional and operating properly, we'll be able to simply do that electronically, be able to get that information. We'll also be able to do rereads quicker, and we'll able, be able to do a test before we actually have to do the bill to see if there's any meters that are out there that are not reading properly. So it'll be a much easier process to do the meter reads on a regular date and then send the bills out on or about the same date on a monthly basis. So you can expect the read's going to occur on this date, and the bill is going to come roughly on the same date on a monthly basis. When we do that, the gap between the actual read and the bill will be a consistent industry standard between 10 to 15 days. So there was a consensus on Plan B last week, and some of the, one of the main reasons was because it was going to be minimal impact on you residents and those that live in Pearland specifically. The, what we would do in this particular plan is we would extend the read cycle from 28 days on average to 32 days on average. This is, as I said, it's easily executed from a city standpoint because the only thing we're changing from a process is simply reading a few days later than what we were doing before. And then we would bill on a monthly, or excuse me, we would bill on a 30-day schedule. So every 30 days, you would have a new bill. Okay? And that's minimal impact on the residents. The one thing that is important to point out in regards to this particular plan, since we are going to be lengthening the read period from standard 28 to 32 days, are the 28-day read cycle that we were actually reading on before, and now we're adding an additional four days where we start the process. There is a potential, based on a four-year history, there is a potential that some individuals could be bumped up into the next tier. And so to accommodate that, we're going to talk about a possible tier alteration in just a second. Now, again, all of this is based on consumption. If somebody doesn't use that water, then they're not going to be bumped up. This would primarily occur during the summer months, and it wouldn't be consistent because it's based on consumption. But my point being is that we did a four-year average on all bills during the higher consumption months, and there's a possibility that 7 to 10%, because of the longer read cycle, could be bumped up into a higher tier during those high consumption time periods. This plan will catch us up to 12 to 24 days in, in the delay. We talked about the industry standard 10 to 15, but this would end up catching us up by the end of 2022. When we talked the last time, we said, the beginning of 2022, we plotted it out, looked at all the holidays, looked at all of the actual scheduled read dates and bill dates, and it would be the end of 2022. So let's take a look at this chart. This chart has a lot of information on it, but I think it's worth spending a little bit of time on it. This is option B, the 3230 Plan. And the information that's on the top of the screen, that portion up there, shows actual read dates and then actual bill dates, and then the amount of time in between those read and bill dates. And if you scroll down, the green bill and read dates represent when we would move forward with this plan, and then when we would ultimately catch up to where the billing cycles were and the read cycles were in sync. And so if you look at the bill dates and the read dates, what we would do is we would initiate this plan starting in March. And in March, what we would do is the billing will increase in speed from monthly to every 30 days. So that's the 30 part of the 3230 Plan. Then at the end of March, what we would do is we would begin meter reading, we'll slow down the meter reading cycle from the on average of 28 days, we'd slow it down to every 32 days. And over an extended period of time, you can see up on the screen on the right-hand side, we will end up, in the latter part of 2022, we'll end up getting to that 12 to 14-day time period. So this is the actual schedule that we have before you. We would start in March with the billing, where we would bill on a 30-day time period, and then at the end of March, we would start with the read schedule where we move that up to 32 days. This particular slide represents, I showed you the first two on the left-hand side before. That was the old 28 to 32-day read and billing schedule, and then we would bill 10 to 15 days afterward. The middle graph shows what happened when we changed to the 28-day read and then billed once per month. And what it shows on the right-hand side is, over an extended period of time, we will get back to that, we'll get back down to where they're in sync, they're, the read schedule and the bill schedule will be hand in hand with one another. The billing schedule will follow the reading schedule. So, council, at our last meeting, you asked us a couple of questions about the 3230 Plan, and I'd like to respond to those at this time. You specifically asked, will option B cause customers to be bumped into a higher volumet, volumetric tier? I want to start by saying that the current tiers that we have is based on a 30-day read cycle, a 30-day read cycle. What option B will do is, on average, we will read every 32 days. It's important to note that the industry standard is, I mentioned this early, is 28 to 32 days with a maximum of 34 days. That's what AWWA states, is you don't want to go any longer than 34 days on your read cycles. So, in answer to your question specifically, will option B cause customers to be bumped into a higher tier? The answer is that the potential is there. Absolutely, the potential is there. Based on history, 7 to 10% of our customers could be bumped into the higher tier. Okay? Since they were previously being read on 28 days on average, now we're recommending going to a 32-day read cycle on average. So yes, they could be bumped into a higher tier. Can the tier issue be avoided? And the answer is yes, the tier issue can be avoided. It would require an amendment to our ordinance, which is easy to do, council, you can do that, a special reading one time, or we can do it, you know, two times. We have, I believe, enough time before we get to the end of March to do so. But what we would do is we would increase the ranges of those individual tiers by the same percentage we have increased the meter read cycle. Okay? So all we would do is bump the tiers up the same amount of time, that four additional days. That's represented by approximately 14.29%. So what we would propose is to take each tier and raise it 14.29% on average. So, what would happen is the tiers would now look different. They would be raised by that same length of time that we would actually be doing the additional reads, and therefore it would accommodate, it would accommodate those additional reads. So let's look at what that would look like here. So if you look on your left-hand side, you have the current tiers the way they are now. In the center line, you have the proposed tiers. So for example, in tier, the very first base rate tier, right now it's zero to 2,000 gallons. What we would propose here is to bump that up by, on average, 14.29%. We round it up in every case, just to allow for a little additional space there, but, so instead of zero to 2,000, the base rate would now be zero to 2,290 gallons. Okay? That's the base rate. Anything within that is, would be fine. So we'd raise the base rate. The next tier was 2,001 to 6,000. Again, we'd increase that on average by 14.29%. And that goes from the original 20, 2,001 to 6,000 to 2,291 to 6,860 gallons. Again, we rounded up just to make sure that there weren't any issues, but the initial math was based on the 14.29%. The next tier, 6,001 to 15,000, that would be bumped up to 6,861 to 17,150. The next tier after that would be 15,000 to 25,000. It would be bumped up from seven, to 17,150 to 2,850, 28,580. And then the last tier, which was 25,000 and over, would be 25,000, 28,580 and over. So we would increase all of the tiers by that 14.29%, that same amount that we're adding the additional days, so that it would compensate for those individuals that used high consumption during that time period. We do have, this is the residential tiers, we do have commercial tiers, we have a single commercial tier, and we have irrigation. That would be bumped up for the same percentage for that time period. So we do the same thing for commercial, we'd increase the tiers. So we do the same thing for commercial, we'd increase the tiers. Now, the next question that you all asked, and I'd like to address that as well. Is the billing system capable of showing unbilled consumption and the balance due for the unbilled consumption? Simple answer to this question is no, but one of the things that was discussed at the last meeting was, what do residents owe? Well, we have billed them for what they owe. They don't, as of right now, they are paying for what they have been billed. So technically, they don't owe anything. We just haven't read, we haven't billed for all of the cycles that we've read. We're roughly behind, as I showed earlier, approximately 60 days are two months for, from the time that we actually read the meters to the time that we bill. So the system itself that we have is, the simple answer is, if somebody wanted to walk in the door and say, "What's the gap?", our system won't tell you that. And the main reason is, is because those additional reads won't, haven't been inputted into the system. Once you input the reads into the system, it generates a bill for everybody in that particular cycle. So we spoke with the software provider, and again, we asked the question that you posed, and this is what the response is that we got, which explains what I just said. The system architecture is designed to bill based on the following criteria, and that is a full read data imported into the information. So when we go out and do a cycle, it takes all of that information. I think you may, if you looked at those different cycles, we have everywhere from 7,000 on up, number of individuals within a given cycle. So it takes all of that information from one cycle, that data is imported into the system for a specific cycle. That's how it's designed. Then it calculates consumption based on the rates and the tiers for that entire cycle. So that information is downloaded into the system, and then it creates the actual rates, and it creates, the rates are already in the system. It takes into consideration the rates and the tiers, and it computes that particular bill for the entire cycle. And then, once that information is inputted into the system, what it does is it generates all the bills for the customers within the cycle. So once we input, if we were to input those outstanding two cycles, it would create bills for everybody in the city, and then those bills would be due all at once. So the system is based on inputting the reads and then creating a bill. Therefore, we cannot do it individually based on the way the system is designed at this time. The next thing I want to talk about, and I hit on this briefly earlier, is policy considerations. If we're going to change the tiers for the 3230 Plan, then we believe, excuse me, if we're going to go with the 3230 Plan, then we believe we need to adjust the tiers like I described just a moment ago, to accommodate for high consumption months so that people do not get bumped into a higher tier. So we're going to recommend that if you go with the 3230 Plan, and we'll bring that back to you as an ordinance change. Also, one of the things, from a staff perspective, we want to do is we want to review that entire Chapter 30 of the utility billing ordinance and determine if changes need to occur based on our practice and based on logical reasoning. One example of that is the way that the ordinance states now is that we are to, once we create a bill, that the actual bill is due 15 days from the time that the bill is generated. Well, we don't do that. You may notice on your bills, from the data that's generated, the due date is 20 days later. So what we do from a process standpoint, and this has been since basically when the ordinance was adopted, we've, we essentially, what we do is we count weekends, and we only count business days. So that's why we put 20 days as the due date. So those, that's just one example of things. We're more lenient than what it specifically states, but we need to clean those kind of things up so that it's more practical and that it stands to reason. What are the next steps? The next steps are to proceed with the implementation plan. We would have the staggered start. We would go ahead and move forward with the 30-day increments at the end of March, where we would actually bill people. That would start initially in cycles 12 and 13, and then it would be followed by cycles 11 and 14 in April. Then at the end of March, as I mentioned earlier, we would slow down the meter reads from on average for 28 days to every 32 days. Right now, we're currently waiving any and all delinquent fees, we're accepting payment plans, and again, this should really and truly only be for cycle 11, because cycle 11 was the only one that initially received the two due dates in February. I mentioned that the credit card, recurring credit cards, we bumped that date back to March 3, March 4, so that those reoccurring credit cards and the credit card payments will not actually hit on the 24th, which is today, they'll hit on March. So we are waiving delinquent fees, we'll accept payment plans, and we're not doing any cutoffs right now. So that's the plan moving forward. Once we get consensus to move forward with the schedule that we just talked about, what we'll do is we'll provide an update to council at every regular city council meeting. We'll go ahead and we'll provide, we'll do town hall meetings on a quarterly basis, as deemed appropriate by council. We'll do press releases, utility billing, webpage, we'll have information there about the plan, the schedule that was on there before, that I showed you before. We'll have information in the utility billing inserts, we'll provide information, we'll make sure that all the customer service clerks, when people call in, they'll have all the up-to-date information and can explain that to the individuals that call. We'll have information in the local newspaper, and then we will utilize our social media outlets, all of our social media outlets.
So, Honorable Mayor and Council, with that information in the record, after citizen input, then we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
I appreciate your presentation on that. It clears up a lot of items in my own mind. The message was that you only get, you only get charged for the water you use. And I was thinking, I have three utilities, which are my phone, my lights, and my water. And the phone, I don't care how much I use it or don't, it's still the same bill every month, it's a fixed bill. And for lights, nothing goes off in my house, so the meter's always running, so I'm never surprised at what the number is. But I have a pretty good idea, because I don't, I, it's a habit, I leave the same lights on, and refrigerators, I know about what they use. But in water, it, I understand that, confusion, I think a lot of the confusion done was with the design of the water bill, in that I've had a lot of people ask, they said, "Man, that water bill is terrible." And I said, "Well, it's the water that you, you're paying, only paying for the water you use, and you have a sewer requirement on your bill, and also, there's a garbage pickup for the city, and that's all on the same bill." Instead of billing those separately, it's all on the same bill. So if you're looking at your water bill, don't look at the one down at the bottom, because that shows all three of those categories, but just look at the water bill. And I can guarantee you that I pay, I had to pay for my water too, so I'm real careful about the bill. I know that I am only paying for water that I use. If I don't use it, if I just, if I go out and turn the faucet, the connection off coming from the meter to my house, turn that off, I don't have any water flowing, and I don't have any bill for the water that's, that's not flowing. So it's something that I think is kind of confusing because of the way we have a billing, but I'll open this up for council to comment, but that's, that's my feeling, that one, when you look at the bottom of the bill, you've got three items you're paying for, water, sewer, and garbage pickup. And also realize that regardless of what your water bill is, it's, it's only water that when you turn the faucet on, take a shower, flush the toilet, or whatever. So that's, that's, that's what you're paying for, is what you've only used. And regardless when it's billed or how it's billed, so I think it's, it turns up some of that. I'll open it up with you, I think you give me hand signals.
Hold on, Councilman Owens. We're going to call systems up first, and then that way we'll have an opportunity to address some of their concerns.
Oh, okay, we've got some, we've got some persons who want to speak first.
All right, if I can just make a comment first. If you see our heads down, it's because we're taking notes, it's not that we're not listening to you. And so please don't take offense to that. You may hear back in our comments on some statements that you've made, but we are actively taking notes, so we want to make sure that we hear you and we're able to, excuse me, maybe ask some of those questions to staff to get you some answers, so thank you.
Okay, okay.
When you come up, please be sure to state your name and address, that way I don't have to repeat this for each citizen. Limit it to three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds. All right, first person, Lanny Cade.
Hello, can y'all hear me okay? My name is Lanny Cade, I live at 1901 Meadow Creek Drive in Pearland, Texas, 77581 is my zip code. I wanted to mention a few things about my experience with the water bill and the water department, in hopes of affecting change with possibly beefing up the customer service or whatever y'all deem fit. July 11th of 2018, I noticed that there was something wrong or something weird about the water bills. I made a spreadsheet and called the water department. I was concerned about why it looks so weird, why there was 20, I think it was 21 days, then 37 days, then 24 days, then 33 days. I was like, what in the heck is going on? I spoke to a man there, and he was condescending, to say the least. He belittled me, he was, he was not very nice. So I said, "Sir, I'm going to email you this spreadsheet, so we can look at it together, and you know, maybe you'll see what I'm talking about." So I waited, I emailed it, waited a little bit, and called back, and it didn't get much better. So I did forward this info to council at the time, and y'all were going through renewing the billing people, Peregrine or something, I can't think of the name right now, during this time. But during that time, during July, August, September, October, there was talk, every council meeting, I went through all the, all the agendas and the minutes during that time, and there, every meeting, y'all spoke about utility billing, you spoke about complaints from customers, and problems that people were having. It's, it's, it's on every meeting. And I wanted to read one thing. I also wanted to point out something about math. I'm not a treasurer like Ms. Butcher, but I mean, I can multiply pretty simple math, and you, Mr. Brinson said something to the effect that I thought was interesting, and then I found it on one of the agendas about the schedule that was approved during this It says, and this was in July of 2018, schedule, "The bills are generated from usage and billing information provided in a secure electronic format. The city is divided into four geographic areas, which are billed in a sequential weekly manner within each month, resulting in four billing cycles for the city."
30 seconds.
And four times seven is 28. I mean, and y'all, I think last week it was said that y'all didn't realize it was on a 28-day billing cycle, but somebody had to know, because that is, that is 28 days. So I do, I just hope that this can affect change at the water department itself, because when you call there, it's unpleasant. And I am a Pearland citizen, and if I call there and I have questions, I don't feel like I should be abused. And I think that's, that's all I have. If y'all want any of this stuff I have, I can email it. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Hewitt.
Denise Hewitt, 3404 Blue Spruce Trail. This is my third week in 38 years, this is, I've never spoken so much to anybody. This, I have a pretty loud voice, I'm not sure you want this to be amplified too awful much. Let me just put it like this. Last week I came with what I wanted to say, and thanks, John, you changed all my speaking points, and so I watched this, and now I'm going to speak on something completely different. So heck, I might be back next week, doesn't that just thrill y'all? So on the 10th, I came in and I talked about my 1-inch meter, and I thank the city for finally paying attention to it. I had been since March of 2017, and they so kindly identified $1,100 that they owed me, and I'm most graciously accepting what I can get out of it. But before you could cut a check, there was my $130 on my bill that was due February 24th, that you wouldn't cut a check, because I had a balance due. So I guess I'm ahead of y'all, because I paid my double bill now. So I just want you to know, you got the $130 in your coffer, right? So thanks for, thanks for the extra money, I'm going to buy a sofa. So let, let's just talk about all this, on John's slides, I don't know, you talked about myths or misconceptions, and then you go a few slides and you talk about your communication plan. Well, maybe you should have had a communication plan before you sent out 11. And I know you said that was inadvertently sent, I don't still understand that. And the 28-day sent was by good intention, and now it's a conscious decision this week. I really just don't have much faith right now. I don't want to say people are incompetent, because I think that is entirely disrespectful. I think you got a set of circumstances, and you sat behind your city wall, and you cooked up how you were going to resolve it, and you didn't think that you needed to tell the citizens about it. And so I think that's your number one mistake, right? And if I owe you $60 worth of billing, I'm happy to write you a check for that, but the fact that you can't tell me what I owe you. Watch this plan, I think it's incredibly difficult and complicated math that you put through it. I'm just wondering if we really have to do that. Can't we just cut bait and start fresh and just tell me I owe y'all? You know, I don't even know how much I owe now that I have a 5-inch meter, right? Maybe 90 bucks a month? All right, you check for $180 and leave me alone for 28 months. This is just incredible, you're spending 28 months to collect two months of billing, or 60 days of back billing, right? I just, it just seems incredibly complicated. So one of the things I wanted to talk to you on the 10th, I said, you know, I think you guys just ought to eat it.
30 seconds.
And I, and it wasn't, it wasn't actually accepted that way. So I think you ought to look at your professional liability insurance and let them eat it, because this is what professional liability insurance is all about. I will tell you that you're lucky that the PUC doesn't regulate you, because I've talked to them. If you weren't a municipality, they would definitely be in here. And you go out to their website, there's some stiff fines, and there's some takeovers. And so I'm looking to council. People have talked about you guys being dogs with no teeth. I expect some teeth tonight in that executive session. I expect some changes in this city. This is not acceptable. $6 million, don't you have a monthly budget review? You've gone through two budget cycles, two annual audits, and you can't find $6 million? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Felicia Harris, Haas.
Good to be back in this austere chamber. I'm glad I'm not in your shoes tonight, though. You've heard a lot. I've, I've actually spent some time watching the video from last week, trying to understand what information was provided, and understand what's going on, and I share the sentiments of the last speaker, that taking two years to rectify a two-month delay in billing seems to be a bit much. I'm here to add I'm here to advocate as a resident for option C. I think that option C is, will do a lot of things. First of all, you don't have to revise the ordinance in the manner in which Mr. Branson has proposed. But most importantly, the opening comments from the city manager last week, the very first thing he said was the purpose of this, of last week's meeting was to bring full transparency. And we have yet to have full transparency. We won't get full transparency unless we know what we, what we allegedly owe the city. That's the only way we can have full transparency. Additionally, Mayor, your comments last week were that you wanted predictability. Option C provides predictability. Option C tells the residents, the customers precisely what the city says they owe. And then there's an option, pay it in full or pay it over time. It's predictable. Then it allows the city to get back on its regular schedule in accordance with the ordinance that's already in place. No need to revamp the ordinance now nor two years from now. And I think from my perspective, most importantly, and perhaps from the perspective of those colleagues of mine who are residents in the city, it puts control into my hands. It takes control out of the hands of the people who created this debacle, staff, and puts it into the hands of the citizens. I can decide whether to pay you in full or to pay you over time. Staff can set up a separate account if the system doesn't already establish it. That can track those payments and track how and when it's paid in full. And the original system can continue to bill according to the way the ordinance is currently drafted. It also, also removes the risk of any overbilling or errors in billing going forward. And I think, so option C, I asked the council to consider option C. I think that it is the option that puts the control and brings everything that you want, full transparency, predictability, and puts control in the citizens' hands. Now, I have a couple of comments that I'd like to address that I think council might want to ask staff about. One is, I understand Mr. Branson has very clearly stated that the city cannot, under any circumstances, tell any citizen, any resident, what that individual owes or past billings. We all know that people move in and out of the city every week, every day.
30 seconds.
There are people who have moved out of the city since the system has been broken who, I guess, have never paid their past due balances, which means the city lost money. So that, that's something I hope that you look at. I also think that there's a question about, with the current system, right? I have here my, my bills and for the period of 2018, my first bill I received was January 2018 and my last bill for 2018 was February of 2019. So that means I was billed 13 times for, for the period of 2018. And guess what? The base rate was charged on every one of those bills. Currently, it's 2020. My last bill that I received from the city was dated February 12th, 2020, and it was for the period October 26, 2019 to November 21st, 2019. That was the last bill I paid about two weeks ago. That means that I still have two more bills coming to me in this cycle, which means I'm probably gonna get 13 to 14 bills with the base rate in it, which means I'm being overcharged, if I'm doing my math correctly. So I'd ask council to look into those things and to consider option C and not follow staff's recommendation for options A or B.
Thank you. Kevin Cole.
Kevin Cole, 3808 Houston Lake Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I just want to follow up on Felicia's comments that if we can't know and understand what a given consumer's bill is owed, then why was option C even put on the table? That, to me, doesn't make sense. If they have a balance owed and we don't know how to calculate that, then why was C even, even prepared? I agree that option C does give the option and the control back into the consumer as opposed to back with the staff. I do appreciate, John, the, the complexity that you guys worked through this week to bring option B and, and, and I think the care and concern that you tried to do that even with the policy changes and whatnot. So I appreciate that. But I'm also concerned about that person that has the minimum bill, that zero to 2,000. Like Felicia said, there are people who, had it been billed correctly from day one, would not owe additional billing. They would owe zero if it was done that particular way. But if we're truly after transparency, you as a, as a policy group have the opportunity to bring complete and full transparency to this process by getting a complete independent audit and investigation into, number one, how we got here, number two, how we fix it, and moving forward. So you guys have the ability to do that. I would encourage you to move forward on that. And wherever that investigation of why and how all of this occurred needs to be brought to light in the essence of full transparency. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, sir. Jimmy Davis.
Starting off, February bill that you pushed the payment back to March. Well, I'm sure the residents that would've been charged today appreciate that, but I would love to ask staff. So they're gonna have two, two bills hit their card in March? Because I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a bill that's being sent out this month, another one, that's gonna be due same time. So I'm pretty sure they're probably gonna end up paying two bills in March. Maybe not. My bill, I just got a bill this, this weekend. Hallelujah, you're not gonna charge me twice in March like you said you were going to when you released your February 10th statement that only had the 2825 plan that y'all have assured us that was just one of many being discussed. But your official press release on February 10th only had that plan. That doesn't seem to line up. Home sales. You know, every month, people buy and sell houses. When I bought my house on February 20th, 2013, on the next day, I paid y'all a $130 water deposit. I looked at my very first bill because I was able to see it. The meter read was February 22nd. Amazing. So that means the estate of Henry and Juanita Kendrick got a bill shortly thereafter for their final amount. I'm pretty sure if any of us sell our house, if we're closing, somebody's closing on it tomorrow, that in March, they'll go get a bill for their final reading which tell me that you can't, there's no way for you to figure out what I owe. And by the way, the bill, the next bill I pay has my new meter. Y'all have the smart reader. You're gonna have the equipment installed. John, you told me in the meeting that we had on February 11th where I understand you didn't appreciate my comments saying people needed to be fired. Thank you for relating that. But you said by the end of March that all this electronic equipment, communication equipment's gonna be in place. And within probably 45 days, so mid-May, it's gonna be communicating. Now, you already have my, my new meter reading. It shouldn't be that hard to figure it out. The city council, I work in, in finance, in utility finance, and I'm telling you, if they tell y'all they can't do it, I'd be happy to sit down with some different leaders, look at what y'all have, and I will volunteer them within 30 days. I'm telling you, I can give you exactly what every meter owes. In 30 days, I'll do it for free because they apparently can't.
30 seconds.
Yeah. You've set up this special bill and you can do a payment plan. You've told people that got two bills in February that said I can't pay it, you set up a payment plan. So you produce a special bill that's a little out of cycle after the equipment's working that says your last bill was for this, your new bill's for this, here's what you owe. You send out that special bill and you say, hey, set up a payment plan, just like you did with February people. You said they have payment plans. Leadership. It's a failure of leadership. At the end of the day, everything rises and falls on leadership. The nice lady said that she wouldn't call people incompetent. Well, the definition of incompetent is not having or showing the necessary skills to do something successfully. You couldn't multiply 28 times 12 and figure out that's 365 or anything close. You don't have the necessary skills. The definition seems to fit. We need leadership change at the top. Thank you.
That's all the comments on agenda item number one, Mayor.
As we go through this process of, you know, we've been paying water bills since 1965 when I got my first one. And it's, it can be quite complicated. And nowadays, we have close to, today, if you probably correct me on this, about 35,000 water meters in the city today, just about.
40,000?
Close to 40,000 water meters. And we've changed out the water meters that we've had that have been here for several years and probably, you need to be a little bit, something more accurate and easier to read and remotely read. So we can only have so many meter readers. If we're 35,000, you can, it's, for them all to be read at the same time. So it's, it's, it's a lot more complicated than it seems sometimes, but the, the intent was to try to streamline the operation. It didn't work out too well, maybe. And I understand your concern, but you're still paying the same dollar figure for water that you paid yesterday and you'll pay the same thing until next month. But it's, it's something that we were trying to work through and realize that, you know, this, cities and companies go through this every once in a while, but it's nothing that we're happy about, but we're very concerned about it and we are working with diligence to try to cure it. So rest assured that whatever water you, every time you turn the faucet on and run water, you'll only pay for the water you use, not the water that maybe you might possibly use or some other number. Council probably needs to make a few comments perhaps and Willie, you had your finger up first, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. John, on that 14.29% tier on that, does that apply also to the sewer rate?
It's just on the water itself. So the rate, that rate remains the same.
So that, okay, all right. And then I guess some of the statement that was on there was the extra month or whatever, since we get the trash bills on those periods of time, did, was that paid in month ahead or, or on some of those, or did that affect that at all since it's on a water bill?
I don't believe there's anyone that has paid 13 bills during this time period.
Okay. I know there's some statements of people moving in and out and deposits and I guess, you know, what has happened on that, at one point in time up here, we had, I don't know what it is today, of people that have moved out. And at one time, we had roughly about $2 million sitting out there of unpaid water bills for a period of time. But by the state regulations, if somebody picks up and moves out of the city into another city, that, and, and they apply for the water, that should come back to Pearland to make sure that they paid their water bill here. From what I remember, that when, when that was looked at on, on there, that if they had not, if they left out owing a water bill, they had to clear that up before the city they went to would hook their water up for them. So I don't know if that's changed or not. That's one thing that we, you know, that was, happened during a period of time on there.
So a couple of things related to what you just said and was mentioned this evening. We do have the ability to close out an account and pay people, excuse me, bill people for the amount that they were actually, that they actually used. So when we do that, it's only for the water that was used. It doesn't take into consideration all the other, so let's say if it's over a couple month time period, it would only be one base rate, but it would be, it would end up being one bill. So we would charge them for the actual consumption. Then they go out of the system. They're no longer in the system. They no longer have to have reads later on at a period in time. So they're now completely out of the system itself. Just want to clarify that information.
So if I could amplify on that a little bit, there was two points. One, it's, option C that was given you is, is viable as an all or none. That's, that's the difference. So we could have, we could go with option C, counsel through all the discussions, there's consensus for the B, but C could have been, correct me if I'm wrong, as an all or none proposition, but for these move outs, which is a different kind of scenario. And then the, the amount you mentioned for arrears, I saw something somewhat recently, wasn't anything close to that, and that was over several years worth of accumulation. A system that's big, building 50 million, you're gonna have some uncollectibles, wherever that is, I'll get that to you. But it wasn't nearly that much and it was built up over, you know, years as it would with any other, you know, system, so.
Yeah, because we had, we had a company trying to collect those, you know, those in arrears. One other thing on the, and it was brought up here on the deposits, I think, what is a deposit, $130 to hook up for the water or whatever if you move into the, into the city?
More for renters, there's a different tier for that.
Okay. And I was just wondering, if that's, you know, everybody that has a house here and they paid $130 for whatever it is on there to get their water hooked up, does that money stay in, so to speak, a lockbox? Is it that, that in case, you know, that people did leave out they owed a $110 water bill, well, we could take the deposit out and, John, it'd still be 20 bucks that they'd still get? So I didn't, I didn't know how we, how we.
That's what goes towards first. And then if there's more owed, then we go after trying to collect that.
Okay. So we keep that.
Escrowed or whatever that's.
Escrowed in the account? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can ask just a follow-up. So if, if I go terminate my service tomorrow, I'll have to pay for my 60-ish days of back consumption, but I'll dodge two months of base rate?
You would pay for that one bill because it would be for the entire time period. You would pay, it's my understanding, you'd pay the one, the one base rate.
Okay. So I mean, we are, the city is losing out on accounts of.
Yeah. I'll, I'll confirm that, but that's what I was told specifically related to the base rate.
Along the same lines, you said if a person closes out their account, they're out of the system. How difficult is it to put them back in the system, say they wanted to pay their entire balance and then just re-enter their information in the system? How difficult is that?
Well, it wouldn't be difficult if we went with option C to do that. The issue is, is if you, and if we cleared everybody out, all at the same time.
Just talking about one person? On an individual basis, give them the option?
We could do that, but here's the problem is then their bill would still be in arrears under that circumstance if we didn't close everything out and catch up because we're still billing in arrears. And they would then be in, let's say they would be in cycle 11 so they could, they would then be billed with the rest of cycle 11. And it wouldn't, it would, it wouldn't catch them up.
So they would have a credit on their account?
In essence, that's what would happen.
Or it would just be absorbed over the 22 months, but they wouldn't owe the money?
That's correct. But then their next bill would be billed to them on, with, we'd have the reading and right now, if we didn't change everybody's bill all at one time, then the next bill would come out when that next cycle for everybody was billed at once.
You couldn't enter them in as a brand-new customer?
So, we could do that. And this is a whole nother discussion, I say another discussion. Then we'd have to create new cycles and add additional cycles throughout the community. Right now, it's done geographically. So if we were to, say, that one individual or however many decide that they wanted to close out, and again, we'd have to input the information in the system and then create a bill to know that exact amount. Once we do that, then we would have to either put them in a brand-new cycle if we were gonna start reading and billing immediately, or they would wait until that cycle gets billed again. That's kind of the complication of the system that we have. And that's why when we were talking about option C last week, we said we would need to do. to do that for everybody in the community. And I think from an implementations plan, it would create a problem. We could do that very easily. And then if people wanted to pay, they could pay. They could pay that entire bill all at once. However, there are going to be some individuals that can't pay, that can't pay that entire bill. And those individuals, so I think the thought process was from everybody, we do something that would be less pain on everybody in the community.
Okay, just one more, one more comment. I think we, we have to go with increasing the tiers, the same percentage of the days in the billing cycle. I think that's only fair with the fourteen point two-nine percent increase. Otherwise, people that are in the high consumption brackets are going to get the short end of the deal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things, like I said last, last time. Y'all are all right with respect to where the fault lies. The laws lies with us, it's definitely our mistake. I can't speak for all the council, but I take responsibility for, for this error. I wish we would have caught it sooner. I wish that we weren't this far behind. I can say definitively, the person most directly responsible for this is no longer with the city. I can't fire somebody who's no longer here.
Can you say that? I mean, I can't.
Huh?
I can't say that.
The, I.
Definitively?
Definitively, the person who's responsible for that, to make the decision to go to twenty-eight days is no longer with the city. So what you, what we can talk about is how the policies were implemented that allowed that person to make that decision and not be vetted up. And that's a, that's a separate discussion. But the person who's responsible for making the change and not communicating it up is no longer with us. Now, if we want to talk about staffing at a higher level from, from, from us down, that is a separate discussion. But as a, as a business owner and somebody who's been in large businesses, small businesses, I've never found that firing everybody solves any problems. It may make you feel better at the time. It may even actually change some culture, but it causes more problems than it solves.
Yeah. Not, not saying that, I'm just saying to your comment of, you know, that definitively that person is no longer here, I, I don't know.
I've talked with staff specifically about that individual, who was responsible, where that person is, when they were let go, why the, the conditions with, they actually left on their own, but because they had this issue and several other issues. The point being is, we had the wrong person in the job. We can talk about how that, how that, how that situation was created and what we can do better to make sure that we have better people in those positions. Something I brought up in the, in the Saturday budget, budget meeting. But that person's not here. The person who made that specific decision is not with us anymore. We're going to have an exec session later where we talk about what we're going to do structurally to ensure these type of mistakes don't happen again. I know that I've had conversations with a couple of you about some, certain things that are already implemented. I'm sure that staff will go, in, in the exec session will discuss with us those things which are already implemented. But the point being is, we take full responsibility for the mistake. I take full responsibility for the mistake. I wished it wouldn't happen. I wish there was something I could do to snap my fingers and say, this is, this error in judgment can be corrected. With respect to those who say, well, we need to do an audit. That's how this was caught. We did an audit. The auditors came back and said, there's a, there's an error here. Can we understand what the issue is? There was a, there was an investigation. The investigation led to the discrepancy in our billing cycle, to our billing rate, how often we sent out a bill. That led to, okay, well, where, how much are we owed? And all of that kind of came, that was in late December. It was communicated to us directly in mid-January, or at least to me directly in mid-January. And then the conversation began with, how do we get this corrected? I agree with everybody. That was too late. I don't disagree with that at all. But it's never too late to start correcting things. We are where we are right now. Now the point is, what do we do to improve, ensure this doesn't happen again, to correct what we can correct? And be fair to the citizens as best we can. That's, that's the path I want to be on. I do want to, I also want to have a path of absolutely structural changes within our departments, within our leadership, to include us about how do we make sure mistakes like this happen? And this, this is not the only system for which we interact with citizens, where we bill citizens, where we bill developers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity for us to make similar accounting errors. We want to make sure that all of it's corrected, not just this one. That's a discussion we're going to have probably over the long term, at least that I wish to have over the long, long term. I've got two more years that I sit up here. I'm not going to be satisfied until I feel like that that's been corrected. But I'm not, I don't personally believe a, let's just chop off heads and start over approach is, one, appropriate or productive. Again, may seem satisfactory at the time, but it's not productive. It doesn't fix the problem. So I have a couple of questions, because I want to make sure that we're, we're on the right path. I, I believe, you know, we as a, we as a body kind of gave you all instruction to explore path or option B. I think that's the most fair option, you know, to those out there that are attorneys or engineers or, you know, or have a little bit money in our, more money in account than, than on average. Somebody just telling us, hey, look, yo, extra hundred and thirty bucks and, you know, no big deal, just pay us a hundred and thirty bucks. That, that may not be a big deal to us. But there's a lot more people out there that'll live on a strapped income. We have thirty-seven thousand thirty-four meters, thirty-seven thousand thirty-four accounts. There's not thirty-seven thousand people in here right now. We send them a bill and say, hey, just give me an extra hundred and thirty dollars or eighty dollars or forty dollars or fifteen dollars. It's going to confuse them. They may not be paying attention to us. We can put the, we can put the information in the, in the utility bills, but I, near guarantee, I can survey a vast amount of citizens. When's the last time you read the information that went with your utility bill? Usually goes directly in the trash. So that's not as effective a communication tool as I would like to be. It's part of a communication tool. Point being is, I don't want to just go out there and tell everybody, you owe us this money, when I know it's going to lead to more mass confusion. What I would like to do is try and be fair and say, you owe, there, there is a volume of water which you have used, which we have not yet collected for. I don't want to charge you for all of that because there's a mistake on our end for why we haven't collected for it. You don't owe us that money. We owe you a bill to say, how do we get you caught up? Nobody is in the arrears other than people who just don't routinely pay their bills. I don't want to communicate people that y'all are all in debt to us. You're not. If you've paid your bill, you're not in debt to us. So we're going to try and take it from twenty-eight days to thirty-two days. The thirty-two days will get us one more day or two more days per month, except for February, to allow us to collect for an extra day or two each month until we've caught up to the sixty that we owe. I feel like that's most fair. I feel like that's the best option. John, you kind of read my mind. I was going to offer an option where we try and bump up, bump up the, the ranges and the base rates so that we can allow for a little bit more fluff to be more fair to the people. So if they do bump that, if they bump up to that level, if they're now at four thousand or six thousand, which each of those tiers, that we don't have to charge them extra when we know that we're billing them for extra. So I think that's a good plan. I think, you know, bumping it up to the fourteen plus percent and then rounding it up is, is fair. And we do that temporarily until we get everybody caught up. And then we move the rates back down in the, in the twenty, twenty-two budget year. So I know that a lot of people have talked about the customer service issues. Trust me, we understand. That is something that needs to be corrected. That's something that I, I'm prioritizing personally that we will work on correcting. I, I don't want to be, I don't want to act with too much hubris and say, I know what button to push, what switch to activate that says it fixes it all. But I know it's a priority for me, and not just with this department, with all our departments. Anybody that's listened to me for longer than a couple of minutes as I've been up here has said, we are in the customer service business. This is a failing of ours that we've been, we've offered you poor customer service. We need to correct that now and in the future and forever. So we, we need to establish some better policies. That's something that we need to work on. I want to go over a couple of things with respect, with respect to people who are leaving our system, people are coming into our system. So if somebody, let's say, I buy a home from, from an individual and I set up my system or I set up my utility bill, my first bill, what, what volume am I be, am I being charged for? Once I get my first bill, if I'm a brand new customer, what am I, what usage am I being charged, would I be charged for under the system?
So your first bill would be based on a couple of different things. Your actual consumption. And then we have what's called the winter quarter average, and that's set for your sewer rate. And that's set at six thousand gallons. That's how that's calculated. And so your winter quarter average would stay the same until after the first December, January and February occurred. And then we would calculate a new winter quarter average. And that's how your sewer would be based on for the next year's time period. So you would get your consumption plus that winter quarter average based on six thousand gallons.
But the, the consumption would be based off of what you measured since I've opened the account, correct?
That's correct.
You, if I open an account today, you would, you wouldn't be charging me for consumption of the previous owner from December, correct?
That's correct.
I know that there will have people leave our system. I know that we'll have to account for some loss as people leave our system. I don't think that's going to account to a lot financially. And frankly, that's just what we're going to have to suffer with. We're not going to have a perfect answer to where those people who are leaving our system decided to move out of Pearland for whatever reason and got a job in Michigan or whatever. I don't think it's fair for us to come back and say, wait, before you left, we forgot to bill you for two months' worth of consumption that you didn't know about. We'll do our best to make sure that they're paid for what they knew that they owed. But I don't think that we need to, we need to extend our, extend our effort to try and collect too much of that if it's, if it causes too much difficulty. I do think for us, as council, what we need to do for here is set a, set an emergency meeting for us in, at least by the next council meeting, for, for us to adopt the, the changes in tiers. So we can get out ahead of it as quickly as we can. Let's do it in one reading instead of two. Let's try and get out ahead of the next bill. So there's, again, there's, we don't have another bill that goes out that doesn't meet the policies for which we're trying to, to change. I, I, John, I appreciate your communication plan. I think we need to implement it. We need to have a conversation about effective town halls. I don't know if once a quarter is necessary as much as making sure we hit the different parts of town to ensure that we've got a road show that says, here's where we are utilian billing, to make sure we go from east to west as quickly as possible. I don't want to stretch it out for a year. But we find some town halls where we go out and offer, offer an opportunity to go to the citizens and let them know where we are and what we're doing. And I will do my best to be at every single one of those once we set them up. I don't know if once a quarter is going to be beneficial, but I do think for those of y'all that are paying close attention, if we have regular updates in this meeting and y'all want to know where we are, you can come to us. There's a few of you that, you know, are very passionate about this and want to know where we are. I, I want to be able to make sure that we have these regular updates, maybe once a month, once every other council meeting. We have two regular council meetings a month. One of those council meetings, we provide an update of where we are with this, what's going on, what's, what we're struggling with. So if y'all want to come, y'all can get an update. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You didn't leave much, Trent.
I know.
I, I too greatly apologize for what has happened. I, I take ownership in this too. But I also want to know from staff, when, when did you actually know this was an issue? And when was it decided to be communicated? Because I've, I've been dealing with people for the last two years on some water billing issues. And that, I'll let you answer that first, because then I have another question that follows up to with the water billing issues I've been dealing with for two years.
So the information regarding the delay was initially brought to me in December of this month, or excuse me, of this year. And that information, I asked for clarification in December and wanted factual information and had been looking for that and requesting that information and ended up getting the vast majority of the factual information within the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you. So you talked in presentation about the, the tier billing. And so some of the customers were charged at a higher tier because of the, the time period of the reads versus the billing. So would that throw people into a higher tier on that? And if it was a higher tier, then didn't they technically overpay for that, that month?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but.
I think I did. And it's actually kind of, it's the reverse. Because if they're doing the twenty-eight days, there would have been less consumption if you would have read at thirty days. Or the range is twenty-eight to thirty-two. But since it was being done pretty consistently at twenty-eight, you actually, the consumption would have been more towards lower tier versus the higher.
So we didn't have anybody that was at a, at a later read that was pushed into a higher tier?
It's not about the late, it's about the time. So if it's a shorter time period?
Okay.
Then by definition, you would have been less likely to kick into a higher tier. So if you would have had thirty days on that same person, you know, they would have been either at the same or at the above rate versus.
Okay. And then the, I want to touch on Ms. Hewitt's point too, on the, the liability insurance claim. What's the possibility of doing an insurance claim on, on all of this?
No, I'm not an attorney expert, but there's no loss. It's more, there's nothing that's, there's no claim, it's not professional liability. So the money's going to be collected, it's about when it gets collected. So there's no, no loss to be claimed.
And then I guess my last piece is the, the customer service piece. I, I, you know, like I said, I've, I've dealt with several people, you know, calling about sporadically, you know, about a, a high bill or whatever, and was always able to resolve that. But one of the things that was always told to everybody was, you have a leak. That was always the first thing, is you have a leak. I, with what's happened now and the, the loss in trust and the transparency, I don't think that we can have customer service ever tell anybody that you have a leak. It, it needs to be, let me look into it and get back with you. And we definitely need to look into it and follow up and get back with people and not give them, you know, a weak answer about they need to go check for a leak, hire a plumber to come out and look at their stuff. I, I think we need to be providing a little more customer service to people and actually taking their, their, their claim and, and looking into it and responding back to them with what the issue is. And if there was no issue on, on our end, then yes, then we can offer, maybe they possibly have a leak. But that should be our, our last, our last comment that we would make to them about the utility billing. And yes, I'm looking very forward to creating a policy that can not allow this to happen again. Like, I can't remember the gentleman's name that was here before, but he's not here tonight. But where I work at, we have a thing called management of change, MOC. If you're going to change anything, it goes through several different departments, several different people. And all of those people buy off on it. And it's a consensus of a group, not a select few individuals. And I think we are drastically in need of that for many a things, but especially for something like this that has a direct, huge impact on, on the residents of the city. So I'll be looking forward to making some changes with that.
Ladies?
Thank you, Mayor. So to remember Perez's comments about.
So to remember Perez's comments about this being caught by an audit. This is the first I've heard of that. Can someone confirm that?
So I'll say what I know, and John can correct me if wrong, but every year, as part of the financial closes, there's an accrual to the past year of what's going to be collected but incurred in the last fiscal year. So during the normal process of doing that, that number came up apparently whenever they were doing that, and that's what was larger, and that's what started the additional questions. And as John pointed out in one of his slides, the days accrued weren't extraordinary until the last year, 2019. So that wouldn't have been picked up on the prior audit certainly, but that's what apparently started to generate the questions.
Is there some way that that piece of communication can be sent to us?
Sure, correct.
Okay. Also, so the last meeting we had on this, I had pushed for option C, and I think it still is the best option. I think, looking at whatever the averages are, if it's for a 60-day period, 80 or 90 bucks or something like that. I had spoken to a resident about this, who's actually here tonight, who I think brought up a good point that maybe could address an issue. I think that, John, you brought up about when you put the data in, it just automatically generates the bill. Would it be possible, and this has kind of been alluded to, I think, by some other comments up here, but would it be possible to create almost a separate account with that amount on there, just showing people what it is and saying, you can pay this in full if you'd like. You can pay it over payments, what have you. But it's a separate bill entirely, like a separate account, if you will. And then their normal account just continues to go on, but it's caught up, essentially. So that would get everybody caught up, and then they would just have their bill and would show them exactly how much they owe.
I'm going to let Dan respond to that, but it's my understanding that we couldn't do that. The system's not set up to do that. As soon as you put that information in there, then what it does is it creates a bill for that amount.
Correct.
So if you did that for everybody at one time, then everybody would get their bill.
Correct. But I guess the point is, can you almost make like a clone account? And put that information into the clone, and then when that's done, you close out that clone?
That's not the way the system's set up to operate. So the architecture doesn't exist to do that.
Okay.
Can I ask about system architecture real quick? How can one person go in and change a billing cycle down to 28 days in the current architecture? Is there not controls in place? Does somebody have to approve it?
Change the actual billing cycle? Yes.
Yeah, that was done back...
Well, that was the read cycle.
Right, okay, so the read cycle.
Yes, that wouldn't occur now.
So there was no controls in place to prevent that under the old system?
The system is not what controls the reads. It's the personnel out in the field that controls the reads at this time.
So it's a directive of when you tell, John, I want you to get in a truck and drive Cycle 11?
That is correct.
Okay. And you said that was also kind of contingent upon weather conditions, things like that also, from time to time?
Well, so the read cycle begins, and depending on the cycle, and we have four different cycles, some of them are smaller than others. Those particular cycles, some can be read in a day, assuming there are no weather-related issues, no problems. Some of them take a little bit longer, a day and a half. That's when the cycle begins, and then those reads are done. And then there are re-reads that are done based on the information that's initially inputted into the system. And then they go out and they do the re-reads, and then a bill is generated, or the read date is then generated for those re-reads, the several ones.
Let me jump in real quick.
Yes, sir.
How old is the system that we are using right now?
2017 is when the billing system, when we changed to New World.
Okay. It sounds like maybe we need a new billing system, because this one sounds like it doesn't allow us to do a lot of different things that we should be able to do in the year of 2020. I think it should be a little more interactive for us to be able to do more things, like be able to do a bill without having to send it out and all of that and accumulate different things. And it just doesn't seem like, it's like a, you know, it's one-button kind of deal. And I think we should be able to have a lot more functionality out of it. So I don't know. That's just my thought, so.
So, yeah, so I do think option B is still, excuse me, option C is the best, just because it does put the control in people's hands. If we're not charging late fees, anything like that, I mean, I'll continue to advocate for that, because then people can decide to pay however they want. It'll get us out of this, you know, a lot quicker than two years. When we were discussing option B and when it was being explained, I actually had a bunch of, I just instinctively, because of who I am, I had a lot of comments that were water puns, like we're drowning in numbers and flooding our inboxes from citizens for the next two years. It's going to have them harbor resentment longer, and it just, all this stuff added up, and it just seems like it's not, I don't know, the best thing to get us caught up quickly. I'd rather us get caught up quickly with people who can and put the options into the hands of the residents. So I'll continue to push for option C. I don't know if we can get some more people on here. But with regard to the base rate charges, John, you had, I can't remember who asked you this question. I think it was, I don't know, it doesn't matter. But whoever asked it asked about the potential for additional bills in a year and if all of the non-water portion of the utility bill was being charged. And I think that's what was asked. I believe your response was, I don't believe there's anyone who has paid 13 bills during this period. Were you referring to the non-water portion or the utility bills in general? I was a little bit confused with that answer.
Are you asking about tonight or are you asking about last?
No, tonight. This is just...
Yeah. What I'm, well, I believe the question you're asking is that, I talked about a couple of different things. Closing people out. If we were closing them out, that would be one scenario. That would happen where we would bill them for the consumption used, and then we'd have one...
Well, that was a different question. I think the question earlier, I think it was Woody asked this, actually, about if there were additional bills, if they would be charged, you know, trash and stuff, correct? Yeah. And your response to that question was, I don't believe there's anyone who has paid 13 bills during this period. Were you just referring to like trash and wastewater? Or were you referring to the utility bills period?
Utility bills period.
Okay. So, because I, and I don't know, I'm still, again, it's a very complicated issue, so I appreciate y'all's patience while we're working through this. It seemed like we had a couple residents point out that there were more than 12 bills in a year. So that's, I guess, looking at the base rate, if it's possible, I know Felicia kind of spoke to this as well. If there were additional base rate charges that were beyond the 12th bill, I'm just trying to wrap my head around people that seem like get more than 12 bills. And I think we have evidence now, at least that was presented. I haven't verified it, but at least that it was spoken evidence that base rate charges were charged beyond the 12th cycle. Is there any way that we can go back and verify that, quantify that? And I mean, that even factors into Member Carbone's comments about, you know, closing out the accounts that the city would be losing out. And you're right, people would just effectively be able to skip out of paying, you know, multiple base rate charges. But then we have other people who may potentially be paying more base rates, so I guess maybe they offset one another. But I just, I'm not clear, because it sounds like a lot of the responses are, I don't believe, I don't think, and I would just like to have a clearer understanding. And I know that we have the residents here tonight. If we can just stay in contact with them, get that information, and get it reconciled, I think that would help a lot. I don't expect a response now, so. But just if we can follow up on that on the next meeting, whenever that is, hopefully on the next agenda item. But if we need more time to go through this, if it is once a month, I think that's fine too, as long as it stays, you know, on the agenda. And then the very last comment I have is just on the customer service, again, to reiterate the comments that I made last time. Whatever we need to do to beef that up, if it needs to come back to us at the same time that, you know, as Member Perez mentioned, if we do move forward with the option B thing, we have to look at the modified tiers. Also, give us the opportunity, I guess, to talk about the customer service. If there's something that needs to be done to beef that up, I just think that that would be an opportunity missed if we don't start looking at that ASAP. But, yeah. And I think even some of that was confusing. And I think maybe the last thing is the slide on page 26, talking about the modified tiers, just to kind of show what the impact would be. If anybody had any, I don't know, I'll just yield there. I think it's, there's a lot. So I'll wait till the next meeting when we get some of these responses. And again, you know, like I said, I really appreciate everybody's patience. We're trying to work through these things. And, you know, it's, there's, I don't know if you know what, everybody knows what GIFs are, but there's a GIF of this lady with numbers and stuff just floating around in the air with her head looking, and that's how I feel sometimes with this stuff. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. The effect of being down on this end of the table is most of our notes get addressed by these guys upstream. As far as communications, talking about quarterly town halls, I think maybe a few more frequency upfront until we get communication out to the residents, and maybe fewer down the road would be a better idea. Anyhow, how our citizens respond to those. Again, I think we had at least one, maybe two citizens state that they did get 13 bills in a year, and Councilman Hernandez touched on this. We need to make sure that those people were not billed the base rate more than 12 times in a year. And I guess finally, we found out about this new 28-day billing cycle 18 months after it went into effect. That's what I'm having a hard time getting my head wrapped around is, and this was a snowball effect. It just kept getting larger over time. And how this wasn't caught earlier, effectively is $320,000, $330,000 a month less revenue that we're bringing in. If you take the $6 million divided by 18 months or so, it just seems like the person who makes the journal entries for these, for water revenues would have right away noticed, hey, we're, you know, 15%, 20%, whatever we are, down in collections. What's going on here? I was a CPA before I was an attorney, and I worked for a large corporation and did these reports every month on variances. You compare year-over-year and month-over-month to see, you know, if there are any red flags that somebody should be picking up. So it's just, I don't know, it's kind of baffling to me that it went on for 18, 19 months before it was caught. And I guess it begs the question, if an outside auditor had not caught it, when would we have found out? Three years down the road? When it was $12 million uncollected? Anyway, that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Commissioner Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think we need some more clarification on the 12 versus 13. And I, I don't know, I'd like staff to, if you can make a definitive answer and say, nobody's been, has been billed 12 times, and let's put it out there, and then the citizens will come forward that show they've paid 13. And it's, you know, I go back through my notes, you know, when I look at water, and over the years, there's been several commercial accounts that came to me and said, hey, our bill went from 200 up to 1,200. What's going on? They say it's a leak. And then a few months later, it drops back down, no leaks. I don't know, it just seems like there's more and more unanswered questions. I wasn't aware that there's been a full investigation, and the person responsible for it's no longer with us. And we disagree on that, but I can't get up here. And really, I don't feel comfortable making a decision on B or C till we have all these questions answered. Again, it took two years to get here. I don't want to rush through this without digging in as much as we have to. And it seems like we're learning new facts, and new issues are coming out in every meeting. And, yeah, the citizens come up here and speak, and it's not comfortable to be up here, but we need to keep at it until we get to the bottom of it. So in terms of options B or C, I don't feel like I have enough information. I've got more questions than the answers at this point.
Just one clarification. How does it work systems-wise or accounting-wise for those in Cycle 11 who have already paid that second payment?
So the billing cycle itself for 11, they were sent that bill on 2/4. And as I mentioned, those that have automatic credit cards, we bumped that out to March 4. The next scheduled time that the bill is going to go out is on 3/13, and their next payment wouldn't be due until April. So...
Do we know offhand what percentage of people are subscribed to auto pay?
I don't know off the top of my head, but Cynthia or Denise may know. I don't know the details, but I can find that out.
No, sir, I don't know the details either at this time. We can find that out for you tomorrow.
My point is only to say, some people, we had people today who said they went ahead and paid it, so maybe didn't necessarily charge their card, but they went ahead and physically wrote a check, right?
Correct. So their next bill would not go out, like I said, it would not go out until 3/13, and then it wouldn't be due until 20 days later, which would be April.
Gotcha, okay. And then I think I share a lot of the frustration that's been said just about dragging this out for two and a half more years. And so I just wanted to talk about two possible ways to not do that. In terms of option C, I mean, indisputably, Member Perez is right that there are people in our community who are really not going to have the means or are going to be put in a very uncomfortable situation by getting this upfront bill. We keep on saying, oh, you know, for those folks that can get on a payment plan. What does that actually look like mechanically? Like, over what period of time do we spread out? Or could we spread out? I guess I'm asking in this way because we keep talking about the limitations of the system, and it won't let you do this or that. And so I guess what I'm asking is, what variables can we alter to structure those payment plans?
So historically, what we've done is when somebody, there's an issue regarding a past due amount, what we would do is we would set them up. We'd work with them, our billing specialists would work with them on when they could actually make the payment. And we'd set it up for, in some cases, if it was a very small amount, we'd do it on a month. We'd do it on a three-month basis. We could do it on a six-month basis. We're talking about a larger time period. We could set it up for a longer time period. But that's done outside of the actual, the note is information in the system, and then we set them up on a separate pay plan.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess my concern there would be if we gave people the option to pay all at once or do a payment plan. I mean, there could be thousands of people who then need to negotiate the terms of a payment plan.
And that's a...
We probably couldn't do that.
And that's a concern with option C.
So I would think, so two things that I would propose then, in terms of, the two options that I would be comfortable with. If you were to do option C, but pretty much give the customer a choice, and the choice would be between paying it all at once or there is a set payment plan, so that there wouldn't be a negotiation. So for example, saying, you can either pay this bill all at once, or we will send you 12 payments. It'll be amortized over 12 months, and you can choose one of those. Is that something that we could do versus having billing specialists with whom there are all these complaints about already, having to negotiate through thousands of requests to do that?
I believe we could do that, but I would need to confirm.
Sure. So that's, I think that's a viable option that I think would accomplish a lot of what our concerns are, not burdening people who can't afford it, but, you know, also giving people... people the opportunity to know what they know right now, and just writing it off if they have the chance. So I, I think that's really an attractive option to me, probably, if, if that's possible, that's what I would prefer. But in terms of sweetening option B a little bit, we talked last time about the, the possibility of moving that up to 34 days from 32 days. Was there any analysis done on that, or any thoughts onto the feasibility of doing that?
We did look at that, and it does catch you up quicker.
Sure.
And we would then have to go in and look at the tier structure for that particular plan.
But it's relatively easy, right? So, I mean, just doing the same math, it's going to be 21.43% doing the same math, so it's, I mean, wouldn't be a huge burden?
I believe we could do that.
Gotcha. Okay, so my only, yeah, I, I think that, you know, you're, you're going to have a little bit higher bills, but again, I, that would catch us up significantly faster. I, I have a lot of heartburn about the idea of, of sitting here for two and a half years and doing quarterly or, or more town halls. I, I think probably, you know, most people who I've heard feedback from, they're, they're ready to get a resolution to this and get it behind us. And I agree with Member Carbone's comments, that doesn't need to be done hastily, but I, I think it needs to be done more hastily than two and a half years. So I, I guess I, I would like to know what the opinions are on the kind of either/or option of the set, a fixed payment plan that we set versus paying it all off at once. Because I, I think that would be a, a good way to go, an improvement over the options offered, as would a 34, I guess a 30, 34 plan. Those are all my comments, thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of C with the 12 fixed, so I'm with you there.
There's a couple of ways we could do that. We could go to a 34 or 36-day cycle.
We miss some time here.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's, what they're proposing is an amortization, it's just one, one or two extra days over a longer period of time. I, I'm not, to be honest with you, I, I'm not in a rush to take the people's money right now and try and get it into our coffers as quickly as possible. I, I'm, I'm in a rush to make a decision that puts this right and allows them to slowly pay for what they've owed over time, as opposed to say, hey, we've decided we made a mistake, now you owe us $130, you can pay us now, or you can pay us over time, but you're paying us quick. I don't think that's fair to any of the people in this room who had no contribution to this mistake whatsoever. I want to slowly pay it. We have the ability to, to withstand the loss over a two, two-year period of time. There's no rush for me to get it into our account. There's nothing, there, there's nothing that's going to structurally affect our, our ability to operate the system if we get slowly paid the $6 million over a, a couple of years. I'd rather do it slowly. I'd rather make the decision quickly and get us on a quicker path, but I'd rather do it slowly.
I, I just, I just don't think people understand the other one. I mean, they're so complicated and so long, I just, I, I mean, if you got a bill and you had the option to stretch it over 12 months, that's it, it's so easy.
But I, I agree with...
I think what they'll understand is they've got a bigger bill and they don't understand why. I mean, I just, and they're going to, we're going to have streams of people who haven't been, participated in these meetings, asking, why is my bill 20% higher? And we're going to be burning a lot of staff time and getting bills out later as, as we have to burn all that staff time trying to collect. But, look, if that's the way y'all want to go, that's fine, I just don't think that that's the right way to treat this. I don't think it's fair to the people to say, you owe us all to us right now. I think it is fair to try and find a way to give individuals who are paying attention to this and want to have the option to pay upfront, to allow them to pay upfront. The system is what it is. Look, my, my father works for Tempe, Arizona, he's a coder, he works specifically for that city to code programs for, for that city. It's a very expensive option to have somebody who is in-house and does nothing but create these systems solely for the city, so that you have the, you're nimble enough to be able to make these changes within your own program. We're stuck with vendors. We can get them to change about as quickly as I can get Windows to provide more timely updates. You know, it's, we don't, they're, they're not going to react to this as, as much as we want, but we, we could take the more expensive option and code it ourselves, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. We're stuck with the system we have. I want staff to provide us clear answers as what are the options are for the people who want to have, people who are paying attention in this room who say, I want to pay now, and I want, I, I want to go ahead and get caught up, so I don't have to stretch this over the next two years. I want to give them that option.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I think we're in agreement with that, and if the amendment wanted to be made that instead of giving a fixed 12-month option, a payment plan, that the, the payment plan was over 24 months, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that either. I, I agree that people, you know, what, what I'm responding to is not, give me my money quicker, what I'm responding to is, some people want to get it over with. And so what's, what's, right, what's, I think we're on the same page, there's no disagreement. Let's give them two options. We can, as a council, decide what that numeric amount's going to be for the, the payment plans, but I was just proposing, because there's a lot of uncertainty, what I think is a viable two-option approach where people can, can do what they want, they can pay off their bill all at once, or they can stretch it out to whatever we determine. What I don't want is, is for that to be decided on a one-off basis. I think we can set it. If it's 12, if it's 24, that's fine, let's decide that, but let's, let's give people the choice.
Yeah, I don't think there's a whole line of people that are, that are itching to give us more money. With respect to the customer, customer service issue, I want to go over a couple of policies and kind of see what, see what we can do with respect to how we react to this. I know we've all said, we're tired of hearing people tell us that they communicated, they, they, they communicated with our staff, and our staff's knee-jerk reaction was it was a leak. I kind of want to see if we can kind of develop a policy, and not to deliberate about it extensively here, but develop a policy where we're more, we're, we're giving the customer the benefit of the doubt, at least for the next couple of years, until everything gets straightened out. Mr. Branson, we, we talked about, well, at least, I know our policy is, if somebody says, hey, it's not a leak, that we offer an opportunity for us to pull the meter and test the meter. And if the meter comes back and it's, it, it shows that there's no errors in the meter, we charge the customer for the test. I'd like part of the policy for us to at least give everybody an opportunity to have them test the meter and lead the charge. So we're not, if, if it is a mistake on their end, if it doesn't happen to have a leak, they're not $120 in the rears just to be able to vent, to vet that. I, I don't, I don't want us to continue to have these kind of negative interactions with our citizens where it kind of shows that we don't necessarily trust their, their judgment. They may end up being, being incorrect, they may end up being, it may end up being a leak in their system, but I'd like us to try and help them to develop that without charging them additional fees before they, before they get to that point. Thank you, Mayor, I think that's all we have right now.
I've got a, one statement on here.
I could make a comment, Charles?
Yeah, I, I think I'm the one in 11 that's paid two bills. I mean, I just dropped one off the other day. But anyway, you know, when you come in and you fill out the information that's on the website of where you live and, and all, and your concern and what you send in there, normally, all that'll come to each one of the council members, and, but the staff would go to the department to make a, you know, a response back to it. And it's kind of like Tony was saying a while ago, when we, when you mentioned, Perez, that the individual that done this is no longer here. Well, I don't think Tony really knew that. I know I didn't. And so, as an example, when you send something in, it's better to get it from the department than each one of the seven council members up here, because all of us don't know everything, you know, within each one, and that was a good example with Tony and I, when you mentioned that the individual's not here anymore, I mean, we didn't know that. But so, there was a concern there, so that, but all those are read by everybody there, and normally it'd go to whatever department it is to, to make a response, you know, to come back to an answer to that. But I don't think you want to have seven council members sending you seven different responses, and probably they all don't, are not the same, so, you know, that's the only thing I have.
Okay. Good.
You know, I've... Just one follow-up thing, Mayor. I had mentioned in the last meeting, where it shows on the read dates for the calendar, it shows that we're doing the readings on Thursday, Fridays of each week, and I, I would like to see in, you know, any future update where we move those read dates to a Wednesday, Thursday, to allow and accommodate for holidays and stuff like, like that, so we don't get into a, a jam where we're reading late.
You know, I've, have received 55 water, 55 years of water bills since I've been in Pearland. And of course, I've, I've never been late because I always have a bank deposit, they always go to the bank. But there has been no attempt or any indication of anybody trying to sabotage our system from the staff position, trying to make things, make it hard, make it wrong. But what it has, what we have tried to do is put in some, what I think are higher, high fidelity water meters, and like I said a while ago, we've got about a little over 40,000 of those out there. And what we've, have been trying to do with the new form was, I think was probably, it's not the best form we've ever had, but it, it was an attempt to try to provide information to the citizens about what your water usage has been, what to cost yourself, and it, but it wasn't, it wasn't designed to, well, it kind of backfired a little bit, it was not our shining hour perhaps. But we're, we're trying to fix this, we're trying to work our way through this, and we're not going to be able to solve it tonight. It's something that, we have staff that's busy working to try to resolve the problem, and let's give them time to do that. I think we, from time to time, we should have an opportunity to kind of dialogue with you a little bit, but it's, it's something that we are not proud of, something we need to work hard on, and something I think that when we get through, it'll be fixed. And, but the bottom line is, I don't know how much water you use, but you're not being charged a bit for any water that you have not been using. So you always get, you always get charged for the water you use. So it's just a matter of when you get the bill and these type of things, which I think is kind of confusing. So what I'd like to do at this point is to move on in our agenda. We have a, a number of issues that we need to focus, focus here on under our new business. And at this point, I'd like to move to new business item number two, and last, last...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I heard several different things, but no consensus one way or the other. I heard, I believe, two, possibly three people say, do the 3230 plan. I heard two others offer an alternate to that plan. I heard, provide us with some more information, we're not ready to make a decision. So what's your pleasure for our next meeting?
Okay. Would you like individuals to just go down and say what we're in favor of, or you want to do a quick hand raise situation?
That's, yeah, 3230. Option B, option C, which is all at once plus a payment plan.
We're not ready to decide.
Right.
Well, I think they need direction.
Right.
Yeah. That's the fixed payment plan, correct, either 12 or 24? Because I, I would put my hand up for that.
If, if we give that direction, it can be yes.
We can bring that back to you then for further discussion.
Yeah. Do you, do you have clarity now, or?
Well, I, yes, I think we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John.
We can provide you some additional information that will, I believe, help you make that decision, so we'll bring that information back at our next meeting.
Just to reiterate my comments, it took two years to get here, I appreciate the urgency, but let's ferret this out till we're all comfortable and, and can make damn near unanimous decision on how we plan to move forward.
For whichever way we go, we've got to buy into it, you know, one way or the other.
I appreciate that, but from the last meeting to this meeting, we backtracked. We all kind of said, hey, we wanted to look at option B, and now none of us want to look at option B. And I, I don't know if we're going to progress next week, we're having some people with seven different opinions, and we're all going to... It feels like the facts keep changing to me, and so I'm sitting here scratching my head saying, what's going on? I think they're missing...
I agree.
I don't think that the, I, I don't remember there being a payment option with C, is pay it all now, or that was it, so...
It wasn't, but it was an implied option, because they said there would be no penalties, fees, and so forth, so...
There was a 25-day plan, there was a 3230, and then there was option C. I think we've eliminated option A. I, I feel like there's enough consensus to say somewhere of a hybrid of B and C. I do believe that there's a lot of different facts that come in with respect to how do we prevent this from happening in the future, but not necessarily facts that change how do we resolve the accounting issue. So, and I'd really like to get the citizens to a point where they feel comfortable that we're solving this as opposed to deliberating. So if we could, we've eliminated A, we got B and C, let's ask staff by, for the next council meeting, let's see if there's an option, a hybrid option for B and C, where individuals can elect to pay the full amount if they wish, and we find a way for that system to deal with it, or we find an accounting measure where we can try and account for what we think that they owe, and credit their bill in some way. I, I feel like that maybe satisfies at least four of us that have offered options.
It's also important to know what the default is there for people who don't respond, just for the calculations, just in anticipation of that coming up.
Yeah, I'd say the default would be B, and they have option, those of, those who are paying attention don't have the option to go with C. I mean, if y'all feel comfortable with that, we can give staff direction, they can present it to us, and then we can have something we can vote on. I just don't want to get into the, into March and April, and we're still trying to figure out what we're supposed to do. We, we have a long period of time to figure out how we're going to prevent this from the happening in the future, but I just want to get the, I want to get citizens back on a path of getting this, getting them to pay what they, pay for the consumption they've already asked as quickly as possible.
Darren, if this comes back to us, just for additional discussion next time, and we get the additional info, and we do reach a consensus, do, can we make a motion at that time, or does it have to be a posted motion?
It's going to really depend on how it's posted. Like, this evening, it's council input and discussion, so there clearly wasn't an item for you to take a vote, formal vote this evening, obviously, it was to give staff an idea on how you would like us to proceed. If you would like to have the option, take action, it would just simply need to reflect that you want to take action, so it would say council, not, not council input and discussion, but it would say consideration, possible action.
But we also have the option not to, we could just treat it as discussion, and then...
What I was thinking is like, we'll have, next time we'll have a discussion, and then I'd pose probably, maybe a first and only, in case you wanted to go with the option B and the modified tiers, so that that was available, and you could either act on it or not, depending on comfort level, but at least that, else safely would be there.
I see, okay, so...
Even if it was an agenda item, we could always...
Right. So, yeah, I, I think that, that would, that's, that's a, a good potential option. Yeah, to bring the information and give us two potential options where we can act, and then if we need to modify it, then we can do that, so that way we can move on. Thank you.
Well, you know, 55 years I've received a bill with it had a charge for water that I used, and I wish we could go back to this, and I think we're working to try to straighten this out. We're not going to be able to solve it tonight, but I do think that we're, we're serious about the fact that we're trying to work our way through this, and it's, this is not our shining hour perhaps, but it, it's something that we're being quite sincere about the fact that we don't, don't appreciate what we, the way it turned out, but we're going to make it work, and we're going to do something back to where everybody feels more comfortable. So, thank all of you for being here and, and sharing with us the issues that we have. But I'd like to go on in our agendas, we have quite a, quite an agenda left here tonight that needs to be addressed as well. This is not going to be solved tonight, but we can solve some other problems for the city tonight. So, thank you for being here, and please stay, because it's still, still a city council meeting. Moving to new business item number two, Councilmember Carbone, would you put this on the table for us?
Before you do that, I'd like to, this is an item...
I think you've spoken quite a bit tonight.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I've got to, I've got to step out for this reading, but I have a business relationship with the applicant, so I just wanted to state that I have to step out of this, out of this meeting for that reason.
Okay, good, good thought, good.
Good job, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, second and final reading, ordinance 2000M-197, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, Mayor, Councilist...
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel, this is the second reading for amendment to an existing planned development around and including the Southern Trails Development. This is for property on the south side of Broadway in front of Shadow Creek High School that currently vacant. And the amendment to the PD would allow for other uses that would include applicant's eventual desire, as they stated, for a gymnastics studio. But that's what the amendment would do for the PD to allow that rather than what had been there originally for quote unquote, religious use in the PD.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on the staff report? I don't hear anyone. Madam Secretary, I believe we've got. Motion on the floor here.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Information tied up. Let's move to the new business item number three. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty twenty dash thirty-one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, Mayor and Counsel. Our, most of our field operations from Public Works and others are based out of a central facility over at Orange Street. We have a fuel station there that we operate, provides efficiencies. That fueling operation is in great need of upgrades and modernization. This will replace the below ground storage tanks with above ground at that site and bring that all into compliance and give us a good, solid system there. This has all been coordinated and planned with the eventual expansions of the buildings, the other facilities at sites. So it's all going to work, fit together well. But this gets us going with what we need to do first, and that is this fuel operation. Nothing to answer.
Does counsel have any question or comment on the staff report?
What, what would keep us from draining these tanks completely and eliminating any potential for contamination? And, and filling them in with dirt or something rather than taking them out of the ground? Is that feasible?
So it's actually safer, modern to put them above ground and there's a bladder or well or a container around that to prevent leaks. And it's easier with the above ground to see if there is in fact a leak versus underground where you don't see it. But that's.
I'm aware of that, but.
I'm sorry.
Rather than incurring the cost of removing these tanks, drain them and either.
I don't think you can leave them in ground, you know? I don't think you can.
Councilman Little, we're not allowed to. So when you abandon them, you have to remove them.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question from counsel at this point?
Real quick. So this is, this wasn't bid out, this was done through the byboard. I guess, I, what makes this type of construction or how come we go to the byboard for a project like this versus kind of our normal bid process?
Councilman Carbone, with regards to that, the byboard are collective agencies do a variety to be able to assist governments and entities throughout the state of Texas. And this happens to be an item that they encompassed on that, that we found that has a quick value and a good value to us to expeditiously get this done with a quality vendor. They, they, I'm kind of chuckling, but they, they bid out all sorts of things that, that can be done. And this happens to be one service that we found.
Having another, sorry.
We're, we're comfortable if we did go bid it out, that they'd still be the lowest and best?
I believe this is the best value that we can get for what we're trying to do to remove, do a turnkey system, abandon, facilitate remediation if necessary, demo the existing facility and repave that and then bring us a new facility with canopy, all turnkey package, above ground tanks, both an unleaded fuel and a diesel fuel tank across the board and updated current facilities that will then meet, meet our TCE requirements and avoid any penalties and fees due to our older system.
Thank you. Just for clarification, don't these people have to be licensed also by the state?
They'll meet all those licensing requirements that are required to be able to do this work.
Any other questions from counsel, comments?
Just one little simple question. Are we going to have diesel at the area over there? Because I know we're taking out two ten thousand gallon, then you got a four for diesel. Now you're going back with two twelve thousand.
Councilman, as I mentioned just a minute ago, yes, there will be a twelve thousand gallon diesel and a twelve thousand gallon unleaded tank. Those are both above ground. Yes, there's two, two tanks. Page twelve of the proposal also has that in there too, sir.
I don't hear any other comments. Madam Secretary, we have motion second on floor.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Moving to new business item four, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R two zero two zero dash four zero, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir. As part of our current neighborhood, street reconstructions, we've endeavored and identified the area of Sleepy Hollow, one of our established neighborhoods. Want to get in there and rehab the streets. This particular contract is for design services and recommending HDR engineering for that work for getting us going on that.
Counselor, have any comments or comment on staff report?
Anybody here from?
This three hundred and ten thousand dollars is just for the design of the street depicted in the drawing, Sleepy Hollow and.
Councilman Little, it's also water and sewer. It's the entire prism. When we go in for street reconstruction, Public Works has evaluated the water and sewer infrastructure. So it includes all three phases. Yes, and HDR is represented here, by the way.
When these streets are redone in Sleepy Hollow, are they going to, and it's sidewalks?
This area of Sleepy Hollow is still a rural cross section, meaning that it'll be a concrete road, open ditch as on both sides. The concrete will be replaced and remain as an open rural cross section as desired also by some of the residents that want to keep that same feel.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's where we bought some property down there, didn't we? Attention bought out some.
Yes, Councilman Owen, both the Drainage District and us also did purchase a property out there with regards to Hurricane Harvey a while back. That one was purchased the rest of, and then there's one other that D D four does own. Presory Drainage District, number four.
Okay. A vendor is in the audience tonight, so if you had any questions particularly. Any other question or comment from counsel? I think it's a good plan. And I would say that Madam Secretary, we got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little. The motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item five, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R two zero two zero dash four four, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a recommendation for replacement of the roof next door at the City Hall Annex. It's passed its useful life. We've had areas of isolated problems, leaks, dealt with those. But this would do the replacement of that and give it a new membrane and give us a solid for the next decade plus. Went through and have a comprehensive vendor that would be able to replace that and recommend that with Omea Partners. Separately, you don't have to decide that tonight. But we would suggest, as we talked about on Saturday, instead of, this came in under the anticipated budget. And so we're suggesting that we look at a, when we do our mid-year budget amendment, that we pay cash for this rather than going to COs for this particular element. I can handle that and that would be a portion, about a quarter of our unexpended cash from last year. But just want to make that note, it's not, we can still award it. It's already in the intent to reimburse for the COs. So we'll still have that flexibility when the time comes how to pay for it.
And I'm, I'm real proud that you're going to put a slope on that roof. You know, flat roofs in Texas don't work. They, they pool water and one broke over in, in Ike. It broke right over my office. The roof did and drowned all my aerospace signatures and stuff. Anyway. Woody, you got a comment?
No, I, I was going to mention what you did. The flat roofs, they don't work. And I think one of the pictures that was in here shows the puddle and the water all the way across the roof. You can have a leak in the north end of the, of the building, but it's coming out on the south end of the building. You know, the water, you just can't trace it. That's, I don't know why we keep a flat roof.
That's good. Any other comment by counsel?
So on Perkins, I looked them up and there were a couple of different addresses. One of them was Pearland. Do we know that this is the Pearland Perkins that has this?
Councilman Hernandez, I'll ask the, answer that question. Is it? They'll be based out of Beaumont, Texas, is where they're based out of.
Okay. Is it, is it? I mean, is Perkins a company that's based in Beaumont? But it looks like maybe they have some satellite locations and. Okay. All right. I was just, I got kind of excited that we finally had a Pearland contractor. So, okay.
So Councilman Hernandez, it is the, it is a parent company that they have satellite offices.
Got it. Okay. All right.
To answer a question real quick, we've talked about slope roofs rule. And I want to do that is that it is still a flat ripped roof, but it will have a pitch to it. Not a sloped roof like we think of like a house or a, I'm not coming in with trusses to fix this. It is a, will be repaired and it is a lightweight concrete roof that will be stripped down, down and then replaced with the foam to make sure things move the water off and not pond like they are. That portion of that foam has collapsed and that's why we have the ponding.
Any other counsel comments at this time?
Mayor. When did we complete the remodel of the annex? I mean, where I'm headed is I'm not going to go remodel inside of my house and not check out the roof first to make sure it's not leaking. It sounds like that's exactly what has occurred.
I don't know the exact date, but when we, we actually had this before you previously and we didn't fund that particular project at that time. So it was something that was discussed previously. It was something that was brought up and it wasn't funded.
This is good for at least thirty years, right? It says thirty years, no dollar limit warranty. So.
That's correct. Just to give a little information on that, through the byboard policy, it is through Garland Roofing, who is the manufacturer of the roof product. They will handle and hold the warranty overseeing the applicant, the installer. Where most warranties that we have and we have processes are held through the installer and then the manufacturer tries to back the installer. And that doesn't go as well sometimes. But this one is held through the manufacturer so that any warranty claims we need to have will be handled by the manufacturer for that product.
Any other comments from counsel? There you go. I believe we got a motion second on the floor. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Moving to item number six.
One, one more, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez. Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to number item six, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R two thousand twenty dash thirty-eight, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Like with the streets earlier, we're also investing through our twenty nineteen voter approved bond issue, improvements to our existing park systems. This is for two sets to improve those to Centennial and Independence Park. This would bring those lights up to LED standards. Also give more flexibility for the management and usage of that to take better control of that. And the lights themselves must goes, you know, the people that, that do these kinds of systems and well regarded and recommend your consideration again off the byboard that's been bid out.
Counselor, have any discussion? I'm sorry.
We've got one citizen wishes to speak on this agenda item, Mark, Jeff Hunkel.
Okay, okay. Yes.
State your name, address, and limit your discussion to three minutes, please.
That overlooked. Good, good speech.
Thank you very much. Jeff Hunkley, thirty-nine, twelve, Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas. I know it's long, so I'm going to keep this very quick. So one of the things on page seven, I saw that the recommended amount was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, but they're getting three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And so the difference is, is about two thousand difference. And I've spoken on these issues before and I see that there's a discrepancy. There's usually an overage in case something else comes up. And that's what I was told before. But one thing I wanted to find out is how much on each of these items is the overage? Sometimes it's two thousand, sometimes it's thirty thousand. And I just want to make sure what types of accountability are in place to make sure the money is accounted for, if not used. Because when I go through the agenda items each time, what I'm trying to look for is any ways that we could spend or alleviate some of the money that we're spending on a lot of these things. So when I see these different changes, that's the first thing my eye catches. And I want to find out that we're using the money properly. And especially when the contractor or whoever's getting the bid knows that there's an overage. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's processes in place so that they don't think, oh, well, I got approved for five thousand. So I'm just going to slip the bill in here for a line item for five thousand. So I just want to make sure that there's things in place so that doesn't occur. Thank you.
Counselor, have any question or response?
Thanks, sir.
Any other question for counsel?
Yes, Mayor. I was reading the packet and on page seven, it mentions three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then on page three, it's a three twenty-seven. So there's a two thousand dollar discrepancy. Can we get a little explanation on what that is caused by?
Councilman Carbone, it's when the original cost came through, as we were vetting through, is that that two thousand dollars is their bond cost. It's a, was not added in when we wrote the memo and pushed forward. But it's two thousand dollars is their bond cost.
Okay. So the memo came out and that's what the three twenty-five is on page seven.
That's correct. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing any other comments at this point?
Other than, other than the fact, just explain the, what the statement said about the addition.
I'm sorry, Councilman Owen. Could you please repeat your question?
What Jeff had mentioned up here about being a certain amount and a little bit of overage. Process on that, we only spend whatever it is and the rest.
Correct. So we've negotiated this price based on the level of work and effort that needs to be done. This is the price that we will get charged. There's no added fees or anything. These are also prices that through the byboard are set and we negotiate that out. Like I said just a moment ago to Councilman Carbone, is that when we finished all that, we did not add in the bond. And that was the difference between our memo to you at three twenty-five versus, I mean, at, yeah, three twenty-five versus the three twenty-seven when we came to, came to you all for approval. But no, you, this work is negotiated.
Thank you for your comments. I don't hear any other comments at this point. Here, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item seven, I'll ask our city manager to pick this one up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. We shared to you based on some questions back in mid-December, how the design requirements exist and how they're applied for smaller infill lots. Obviously, it's a balancing act, but the deference is always given towards protecting property and life. And we need to have drainage systems and we need to have engineering design for a lot of these. So that's, you know, they just can't, even though it may appear small, over the course of a city, you've got to, you know, these things are cumulative and we can't have properties development on these infill lots negatively impact adjoining properties. So they are looked at closely. We do have requirements. There's some specific examples on page five and six of the memorandum of a few lots that have come up. So it's pretty straightforward in terms of, of requirements and, and our expectations for. for builders and developers. You know, they'll be gone after they, they complete their work and we've got to make sure that we've upheld our standards. We've got a good track record of that as evidenced by the various storms and how we've withheld up through those. So there was some council questions, just wanted to highlight this and maybe ask some additional questions. So that's why that's here before you.
Council, have any question or comment on that item? Would you make comments on it? This is not an action item.
Right, but there's council members that asked this be talked about, so that's, that's...
Yeah. So I was one of the ones who requested to look at this as there's four lots over, I don't know, rough like Cherry Street area at Cunningham, sorry.
Yeah, those are described, just for reference, on page five of 40.
Yeah, so there was somebody that wanted to build some homes over there and was told that they had put detention in each one of the backyards. So I just thought that was kind of a crazy thing. So I wanted to look at this and try to figure out, is that the requirement that we have for everything that we're going to try to fill in on, you know, these small lots? And to, you know, look at the overall drainage and see, can it handle, handle something like this? And if not, then, you know, what's the option for that property then? If we're not going to be allowed to build on it without putting detention in the backyard of the home where you're not going to basically have any yard, it's going to be detention. So I just wanted to see what kind of options there were to do this and see how it affects the overall drainage in the areas and try to come up with some kind of plan where we could address this easily opposed to having this be such one offs every time.
I mean, Robert can chime in, but, you know, appreciate bringing that up. There have been repetitive losses as noted and it's really up to the property owners and their team to address that and design that. It's not going to be up to us. I know you're not saying that, but they need to come up with a solution that's going to work and not negatively impact the adjoining properties and meet the requirements. So really the ball's in their court, you know, on that one particularly, to come up with something. We're happy to review that, try to work with them as best we can, but, you know, it's going to be up to them to figure that out.
Yeah, and a lot of cases, I mean, it's like $5,000 for them to do, you know, this kind of plan and there's, there's, it's difficult to get an engineer to sign off on that or that amount of money because it's just, I mean, there's no profit in it. So, I mean, it's hard for somebody to come up with a plan like that for, you know, a one off kind of deal.
Okay. Any other question? I mean? This is a workshop item, so you had any wrap up comments on this, Clay? At this point, okay. Why don't we move in our agenda to item nine, which is Mayor, I'm sorry.
Hold on for a second, Mayor. I just want to give my other fellow members an opportunity to deliberate on this, see if they had any opinions. With respect to this, I do think that it's important for us to be looking at detention. It's a valuable component to our infrastructure, but it's not valuable when it's overly punitive and not necessarily beneficial. I think the thresholds that we have right now, Robert, you and I've had these conversations. I don't disagree with the approach that we're taking. I just don't think that at this, the thresholds that we have currently are necessarily beneficial. We're really to the point where the restrictor is going to release about as much as the acreage would allow to go through if we do a minimum six inch restrictor. So right now, we, we're looking at thresholds of 15,000, modifying to 15,000 square feet. I really think that, my personal opinion is that that needs to be a half acre before we even look at a residential lot requiring detention. A lot of these, or a lot of these empty tracts that are in Shady Crest and some of the undevelopable tracts, there's just, there's not really a practical way to do it on a small lot that size. I know that from experience. I've, I've had a look at these. It's too expensive, they don't know how to get it. The applicants don't really know how to address it. The engineers out there won't really do it, they won't touch it. And when they do, it's extremely expensive. So I'd like to increase the threshold, follow the policy, but increase the threshold to where we're looking at larger lots.
Some good points, so, yep.
Councilman Perez, Trent's going to go ahead and put up something on the screen. It's in your packet on the last page in this particular topic. I know it's a little difficult to read on the screen if you're seeing that. But, you know, we've, we've been looking at that and making a lot of concessions in terms of that where we as, as the engineers or the staff are working with the homeowners for those outside or under 15,000 square feet, taking a look where we work with them to develop their grading and drainage plan on a residential homeowner type level, showing us how water moves around. No detention, as you can tell, in the 2020 proposed EDCM. Taking that all the way up, as you talk about, to that half acre where we're starting to look at the lot coverage as in relation to a single family residential that's at 15,000 square feet, SR, so basically SR 15, where the UDC also says it's only 50% coverage of impervious coverage. So that's 7,500 square feet. Taking that approach, looking at the half acre size, where at 7,500 square feet, that's an extremely amount of impervious cover. I mean, that's a nice sized home, garage, driveway, et cetera, at 7,500 square feet. And looking at anything above and beyond that, 7,500 square feet, we'd be taking a look at how we can start talking about and meeting with them about what the options are if mitigation for drainage or detention or impervious cover needs to be met. So we take a look at that. We also take a look at the aspect that those homes that may be outside the special flood hazard area or the 100 year flood plain, that may be in an area that habitually floods due to localized drainage issues. We are taking a look at those seriously as in terms of, we don't want to impact the neighbors or give the perception of the neighbors that we'll continue to allow homes to be built without some form of mitigation or discussion about that or evaluation that the drainage system can handle that. Perfect example, those is Councilmember Moore mentioned and brought up about Cunningham, which is the most acres that we have a current CIP plan project in the 2019 bond program to do improvements on the roadside ditches. And also north of that, the Willow Crest area where we're doing storm drain rehab and some street rehab and sanitary rehab in that area as part of the 2019 bond program. Hopefully being able to improve that area that ties into the Makawa Road project and Brazoria Drainage District Number Four work in their drainage structures as well as along Makawa. So this is a combined effort among different agencies, both of us, and working together with four projects to try and improve drainage in that area. So, but overall, we want to make sure that we take that into consideration as well as we look at those individual properties that come in. But we've set some standards, as you've asked, or what as council has talked about and we've talked to with our residents and homeowners to take a look at what our comparable cities, sister cities and surrounding areas are doing at 15,000 square feet. Seems to be the norm a little bit, but there's no real 100% everybody does it this way. We've taken a look at what we can best do for our residents in being able to help them develop their infill lots. We believe that the 2020 proposed, which is the last four columns that you have in your handout, is the best approach at this time while we continue to evaluate that.
I appreciate that. My opinion, I think we should, again, knock it up to a half acre and not, and not have being in the SFAA trigger detention, though it does should trigger mitigation. That's the direction I'd like you to see. I'll offer any other council member an opportunity to share their opinion.
So just, just for quick clarification, on that 15,000 square foot lot up to a two acre lot, residential lot, the requirements for detention only kick in if you've got impervious coverage above 7,500 square feet under the 2020 proposed. So if the impervious coverage is less than 7,500 square feet on that half acre lot or 15,000 up to two acre lot, then it does not trigger detention?
Unless you're in a 100 year flood plain and then we have a component in there that does trigger detention. So it's just, it, not to debate the point by point, it's an, it's an odd series of criteria from what I'm used to seeing. I would argue that 15,000 square feet, even if, even if you get into that impervious cover number and lots that are larger, you're, we're not affecting the system in any beneficial way by forcing the required detention. We're only being punitive of those that are trying to develop it and I don't, as I run the math, I don't see the benefit. I think once we get into half acre and larger, then there's a more definitive benefit between the CFS that we're releasing and what we would have them control. Again, that's simply my opinion, the other council members can chime in as they want.
Any other comment from council at this point? I think we've come up with some good ideas, that no action is required, this has been sort of a workshop. Let me move in the agenda to item number nine, which is Mayor, council issues for the city council in discussion, none for the night. And item 10 is executive session under Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for personnel matters regarding employment duties and responsibilities of the city manager, deputy city manager and director of finance with respect to water as buildings. And executive session for 551.071 regarding consultation with city attorney regarding confidential legal matters. And executive session five, for 551.074 for personnel matters regarding appointments to the boards and commissions. Obviously, we can discuss these in this executive session with those persons who are invited to be there, but we can't make a decision in executive session. But upon return to open session, we will address all three of those issues as a council action plan. But this time, we will recess into executive session at 9:38.
Wow, cookies here too. Counselor adjourned to executive session at 11:46. Moving in our agenda to new business item number eight, which is regarding constitutional state attorney regarding confidential legal matters. No action will be taken on this item. Moving to consider item nine, which is considering possible which is regarding constitutional city turn regarding confidential legal matters. No action will be taken on this item. Moving to consider item nine, which is considering possible action personal matters regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Mayor Fortim must move it little.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Brandon Dansby to position one on planning and zoning commission. Contingent on him resigning as from the EDC, PEDC. And Henry Fuentes, appointing him to position two on planning and zoning.
Second.
Moving. That information record, did you make a motion with that? Was there a second? Any discussion on that motion? Harry Dunn, may I have a secretary, I believe we have most of the second on the floor here.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes seventy zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number twelve. All the business, there is none. Item thirteen. The agenda says that I can adjourn this meeting tonight, which I shall do at, what is the timeframe? Eleven forty-eight. Thank all.